Just whenever, whenever, yeah, just, just holler at me and, and I'll airdrop. Yeah, that's good. Isn't that the best way? Yeah, a video. Yeah, good.
Okay, it's just that light right there. You can't do this, not, okay. I think it's, you know, depending on where they set the chairs and the table. I just can't look up over there. That's bright. Ooh, yeah, great. Speaking of lights. Speaking of lights. So are they gonna take her trick or treating?
Like your dress.
They'll take her.
Is that her dress?
Yeah, yeah.
How's Ally?
My oldest son is four, July.
Good morning. I now call the October 6th, 2022 Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board to order at 9:00 a.m. Please silence your electronic devices and remove hats to avoid disturbing others. I will now explain the rules for this work session. The work session is a meeting, is a public meeting as defined by Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the Board Clerk. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion in a, on a particular agenda item, the Board Clerk will call speakers' names in order received. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and, and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for attend, your attention to these important rules. I now would like to start the briefing with Ms. Thrower reading our commitment statement.
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. And for the purpose of the public, Reverend Cummings is joining us by phone today, so he is not present. He's a Florida School Board Association Board of Directors meeting, but he is by phone. So we will now begin the work session, actually the agenda items, with the Superintendent's Administrative Briefing.
Thank you. Good morning, Vice Chair Campbell, members of the Board. Great to see you this morning. For my briefing, I'm going to bring forward Ms. Dobins, our Executive Director for Operations and Emergency Management. And as you all know, she did just a phenomenal job in leading us through Hurricane Ian. And before she does that, I just want to reiterate our thoughts and prayers and support to our colleagues around the state. We still have five districts that are not able to reopen. We are very grateful for our community and support, and we're very fortunate that we were not in a similar situation. But we stand ready to support them, and we'll continue to through this process. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Dobins to share the work that happened here in Marion County.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Gullett, and Mrs. Martina Lopez. As you are aware, we had Hurricane I, Ian pass through. We started monitoring this storm at the district level on Friday, on the 23rd, and throughout that weekend. And ultimately, we wound up opening a special needs shelter on Tuesday evening, as that school went into virtual session for that Tuesday, and we kept the district open for Tuesday. Then we proceeded to open six shelters on Wednesday at noon. With that, we housed 360 evacuees in our seven shelters. We served them 431 breakfast, 418 dinners went out, 113 lunches, and 16 snacks. We housed them through Thursday morning, where we, at that point, closed the shelters. After we closed the shelters in that process, we began our post-storm assessment on Friday. Our breakdown for damages were that we had eight schools with trees down, four schools with minor roof damage, 13 schools with roof and ceiling leaks, one school with window damage, two portable damages at schools, and six schools with miscellaneous damage. It could be a greenhouse, sports netting, and so forth. And then we had 28 schools that had no damage. These damages were minor, and all were able to be addressed internally between tech services and our grounds crew and our custodial crew. Right now, we are now in the documentation phase. That is where we collect all of our post-storm and storm documentation. So FEMA has designated Category B Public Assistance for Emergency Protective Measures and Emergency Work Labor Eligibility. What this means is that with all of our documentation, we will be able to be reimbursed for 100% of our shelters, which is very good news for us. I'd like to take this time, this is absolutely a team effort and team event. I'm very proud of our district, starting with Brady Natino, who is our Emergency Management Coordinator, our principals, our shelter managers, our staff, but this is very widespread district. From our leadership team to our warehouse, who was taking out our shelter boxes, you know, moving supplies as needed, to our food service, who fed the evacuees and staff, to our custodians, who kept, kept our shelters clean, and then came in to clean our schools for post-damage, to our technical services team, who did all the maintenance work and all the prep work that goes into opening a shelter, to safe schools, who monitored throughout the storm for unique situations and addressed that in collaboration with law enforcement, and also for all the other staff members that came together to make this effort seamless and ultimately successful. And we are very blessed that we didn't have the damage or the situations to our colleagues to the south, which we do wish them the very best. And that's my closing remarks for this. I take any questions at this time.
Board, any questions, or Ms. Thrower?
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. And Ms. Dobins, it really isn't questions, it is acknowledgement of the tremendous coordination and collaboration and, and commitment that I personally witnessed, starting at the Emergency Operations Center with, with Preston Bolin and, and his team, Aaron Miller. And until you witness it for yourself, as a typical community member, wouldn't have any idea of the number of organizations that come together so quickly and so intensely, monitor the storm, and do everything that they can to try to find that sweet spot of when to open shelters, when to close schools. We've gotten so used to having everything be so convenient, you know, at, at a drop of a hat, you know, we get what we want. And it was a super important reminder that hurricanes are darning convenient and disruptive. And it was illustrated to me how important it is, nobody wants to leave their homes. But our citizens with special needs or that are in vulnerable flood-prone areas, those relationships, I'm thinking of Becky Rora and transportation and, and the buses and, and Marion Transit that goes out to, to pick up these vulnerable populations. And those calls began days before the storm hit, to try to begin to create that relationship and, and help folks understand that, that we are there for them, and if they're willing to come, you know, we'll take excellent care of them. And I, and I've witnessed that for myself, you know, being able to go to those shelters and, and see the level of compassion and organization made me very proud to be a member of, a community member of Marion County, let alone a board member of Marion County Public Schools. So also, great news on the fiscal side about the Category B FEMA and the 100% reimbursement, because you learn a lot when you delve into things, and it's my understanding that there's been previous storms that our county, even though we have just gone above and beyond, and, and that's what we do, we still haven't even gotten reimbursed for it 10 years later. Is that true?
That is correct. The reimbursement process takes an enormous amount of time. Our Risk Management Department does a tremendous job, and our Finance Department does a tremendous job submitting those FEMA reimbursements. It's really not on our end, it's just that governmental process that you have to go through. I'm hoping that with the Category B that it would be expedited, but there are no guarantees. I mean, when you think the impact of this is statewide, and then FEMA being federal, you also have other states impacted it. It's quite lengthy, but it all hinges on our documentation and our submittal. And as you said, I'm very proud of our district from pre-storm, storm, and post-storm, how we come together and serve our community, our district, and then we do everything we can fiscally responsibility-wise to, to do it well.
That's awesome. And, and I'm sure as a result of the, the collaboration, that there are behind the, behind the scenes tweaks that have been identified that, you know, we can work on to make things, you know, even better and more smooth and, and streamline some things. I, I know that Sheriff Woods sent a team down right away as soon as we knew that our county was largely spared. You know, we, we are definitely a, a community of, of givers, and when the donkey's in the ditch, I really wouldn't want to live anywhere else. So just hats off to, to everyone on your team and everyone that's listening that's, that involved themselves in any way and continues to.
Thank you.
I agree with everything Ms. Thrower said, and hats off to you, Barbara Dobins. I know you've been working on this for years, you and your team, and I think it was important that you acknowledged your team as well as you did, because, you know, as an appearance, everything was seamless, it was organized, you guys were prepared, it was planful. And as Ms. Thrower said, as giving to our community, you guys did an excellent job. And I think it's also important for our community to know and understand that other counties don't necessarily do what we do with the work. And like our employees who come in and they man the shelters, and other counties, they just hand over the keys and say, "Good luck." And Marion County School Board, we don't do that. We, you know, our employees are very thoughtful and caring, and they have always, you know, since my tenure, have showed up when they needed. So hats off to you and your team, and thank God that the storm was not any worse for us, and it is unfortunate for what had happened down south.
Thank you.
Mr. Browning?
Yes, thank you. Well, we were spared an awful lot, and one of my big concerns, just as an observer, because the Board was able to observe an awful lot of activity during this time, is Ms. Dobson, you finally got some sleep. It was a serious concern. I don't think, I think you'd better set up a, a, a little better system so that you get some rest during these, these things, because we live in Florida and there's gonna be hurricanes, and, and you've gotta take a little bit off your shoulders. This Lauren DeBick was also there and did a, I, I was very taken, I'm sort of a consultant mentality. That's what I do mostly in business, and, and I was very, very pleased, I was just observing, watching, how, how this was all happening. And the Superintendent has some great talent, pulled it together, and, and for the Superintendent. Golly, it was like a general Superintendent, you were like a general there with the staff, and, and gonna make things work, and make them work as efficiently as possible. And the Sheriff, hats off to him, he accommodated everyone, the state of Florida. The Emergency Management Program was excellent, they went around the entire state, and the good Lord handling the high pressure that pushed that thing off to the west. Now, the folks that it did hit, my, my heart goes out to them, because it certainly did go through some areas, especially in southwest and central, some rural areas, and then the east. So it was, it was difficult, there's no question about it. But I was very pleased, as a Board Member, to be able to observe a competent, well-run, efficient program. Dollars were well spent, and I think safety was the issue, students, property, we were, we are responsible for. It was all good. Hats off to you, Superintendent. That was, that was well done. And everything focuses back, good or bad, on the Superintendent. That's really where, where the rubber meets the road. So you did a great job, Superintendent. Thank you.
I have a great team, sir. Thank you.
And I'm not gonna repeat everything my fellow Board Member said, but I guess ditto, and, and kudos to the whole team. We were prepared. Our, our team, our function, our sheltering team, with, and that's the function in the EOC that we serve in, we were prepared, we were ready. We, we, we did everything we were supposed to do, and, and then some. And so very grateful to see how efficient and effective we were, and also grateful that FEMA is gonna reimburse us, because we heard quite a bit about how important the documentation was, and so we're very heavily responsible for ensuring that we also are getting reimbursed because of the documentation. So all those who did that part, too, we may not have seen them in their operations, but they were a key part of, of this, too. And as Dr. Gullett started the meeting today, talking about our, our thoughts and prayers with those to the south of us, we all know the change that happened between Monday and Tuesday, what the path looked like, and if it had come through Tampa, we would be dealing with what Orlando and Osceola and Seminole are dealing with now, and, and it could have been so much different. Those that are in Charlotte and Lee Counties and the districts that have schools that are uninhabitable, and I, I don't know what they're going to do, but just grateful that there's a wonderful network of districts and Superintendents and School Boards, and we're all here to help each other, and our thoughts and prayers continue to be with them. Is there any public comment about this issue? Thank you, Ms. Dobins. We appreciate you so much.
Vice Chair Campbell?
Yes.
Sorry, I wrote it down, but I didn't say it. I would have been remiss to not mention, I believe it was Central Christian Church that accepted our special needs residents that, where their homes still weren't quite ready to be inhabited. And there weren't too many in those situation, thank goodness, but because of the generosity and caring hearts of Central Christian Church, it enabled us to get our schools cleaned up and, and reopened. So it truly is a team-community effort.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower, for mentioning that. I, I concur. I appreciate that. Thank you. Dr. Gullett?
That concludes my briefing. Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell.
Wonderful. So the next item in our agenda is Student Pathways and Assessment with Mr. Ben Whitehouse. I believe we're gonna be talking about Strategic Plan Proposed Revisions. Welcome, Mr. Whitehouse.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Good morning, Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, Board Members, Superintendent Gullett, Attorney Powers, and Ms. Martinez Lopez. I am here to provide you some recommended revisions for our achieved 2026 strategic plan. So just as a reminder to the general public, our plan was board-approved on November 9th of 2021, so just last school year, and it is focused around five key pillars or five goals that ultimately revolve around Goal One, our student success. So my team began work with the strategic plan in the fall of 2021, right after it was board-approved, and we focused on looking at how we're going to track the progress of all our activity, not just with the outcome metrics, which are very important for us to be able to report on, but also all of the strategies and key activities, and making sure that we were maintaining progress in all those areas throughout the years. Along with that, we also began a partnership with Hannover Research last school year to help us with a number of research projects. And one of the things that I asked them to do was to give us an outsider's perspective on our strategic plan. As a group that works in strategic planning a lot, that could take a look at where we are and see if there was anything from an outsider that we needed to make revisions on.
My apologies, Mr. Whitehouse. Where Reverend Cummings is, is very spotty with the cell phone service, so his call continues to drop, and so that's where we're... So for those in the public who may just be listening and wondering why a phone just started ringing in a microphone, that's why. And he's back on the phone with us. Thank you, Mr. Whitehouse. Please continue.
So we, we did get some recommendations back from them based on their outsider perspective. And some of the things that they mentioned in that review, one, they felt we had a very strong foundation for our strategic plan. They especially liked that we led with our vision, mission, and values, and they could tell that that was the core of the work, that what we were doing with our strategic plan, and that we had some really strong goals built into place. They also felt that there were a few outcome metrics that we needed to clarify, that were not clear to an outsider as to what exactly we were measuring. And so we took that feedback back to the groups, and I'll share some of that in a minute. They also recommended that we take those action plans, those strategies, a little bit further with our action planning, and make sure that we have for every strategy, a plan in place of who's responsible, timelines for when those will be completed, and also what, how are we going to measure the progress of each of those activities, so that we have ways to track our progress throughout this five-year plan. And then finally, they made a recommendation that we look at and define key performance indicators, which we knew internally what those key performance indicators were, but they were not apparent to the outsiders who would be reviewing this plan, our general public, and so we wanted to make sure we're very clear. And I will share some updates about key performance indicators in just a moment. We also took an opportunity to compare our strategic plan with some peer districts, looking at districts across Florida that have similar demographics as ours, and also some districts across the country that have similar demographics, just to look at how they monitor their outcome metrics, what things they're focused on, and how that aligns with some of the work that we're focused on here in our school district. And from that, we were able to take back some recommendations for some areas that we could certainly focus on for monitoring progress throughout the next five years. So the timeline of how we move forward this summer, on June 7th, we held an action planning workshop for the day with all of our departments, really spending time focusing on the strategies and activities that we're going to be carrying out with the strategic plan, and making sure that we were planning with the end in mind, that we started with, what does this need to look like at the end when we're complete? And then how does that timeline play out for us to be able to achieve each of these key activities over the next five years? In June 23rd, I met with Dr. Gullett to review some of our recommended proposals and some of the areas where we felt we could add some clarification to our outcome metrics. And we decided at that point that we would start meeting with each of our departments and leads to really make sure we have the right metrics, that we were clear in what we were saying, and that we were measuring the right things over the next five years. So I spent July and August meeting with small groups at a time to look at each of the outcome metrics, look at each of the strategies and activities, to make sure that we were focused and clear on what our mission was for this next five-year plan. And then finally, in September, we reviewed those final recommendations to be able to bring them here to you today. So the outcome metrics, as I mentioned, we spent time really focused, one metric at a time, meeting with the departments and teams that were responsible for those metrics, making sure that we were clear, that we had the right strategies and activities that would help us accomplish each of those goals over the next five years, and to make sure that we have captured the progress on each one of those for the last six months that we have been working through this strategic plan. And I've provided you with a couple of handouts now, if you will refer to, that I'd like to go through, so we can look at the outcome metric proposals, where we were, and what we would recommend as changes. So if you note, there are two handouts. One has yellow highlights, the one with yellow highlights is the original goal outcome metrics. That's what we are currently operating under with our strategic plan. The one with green highlights are gonna be the recommended updates. And so I'd like to go through this one goal at a time and just talk you through the rationale for each one of these recommendations. And feel free to stop me along the way if you have questions as we move through.
Mr. Whitehouse, I just wanted to make note for anyone who may be following along at home, the yellow one is the, listed as original outcomes, and then the green one is listed as updated metrics. So if anybody's looking at Board Docs right now, that's how they can find them. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. We would focus on each of the areas that were listed in our district grade that we receive from the Department of Education each year. So we added in proficiency tracking for English Language Arts, Math, and Social Studies. We already had science in place, but we added each of those proficiency categories, as we will get proficiency results this year that we can measure. And you'll note previously that our goal, our outcome metric for Goal One was to increase the percent of students that had the opportunity for advanced coursework, which is certainly a worthwhile goal for us to pursue. But as we noted over the summer, Ms. Kim, I think you were the one that brought this up, that having opportunities is great, but we really need to see the outcomes as well. Are they being successful, not just taking the classes, but are they succeeding in the classes? And so we have shifted that, increasing the opportunity to be a strategy, whereas the outcome will actually be measuring the percent of our students that achieve success in those courses through middle school acceleration, which is a part of our district grade, and through high school acceleration, which is also a part of our grade. And we can't increase either one of those areas without also increasing the opportunities for those students to be successful. And we've also added in graduation rate, which we know is certainly something that we were always focused on, but needs to be a, a, a primary measure within student success Goal One, is that is our ultimate goal with students, that we move them through our school system and successfully graduate them to the next phase of their life. So from that, you'll note also, I've added in already the baseline data for where we were in 2020, or 2020, 2021, for each of those, to match our baselines for the previous goals, and then we have established targets for each one of those areas. And the targets come from our desire to move our school district into the top third of the state of Florida. So in setting each of those targets, we looked at the school districts that are currently in the top third of the state of Florida, and looked at where are they performing in each one of those indicators, and knowing that we need to match or outperform each one of those indicators where they're performing if we want to be in the top third. So if we achieve each one of these target areas by 2026, we will not only be an A-rate in school district, but we will also be in the top third of the state of Florida, which is certainly our ultimate goal, where we want to move our student success. So those are the recommended updates for Goal One.
Mr. Whitehouse, Mr. Browning has a question.
Yes, sir.
Before you move on from that, so help me understand, the target, 63%, and first we start with Language Arts, 50, then Math, 56%, 57%. Describe what you mean by those percentages. Does that mean that almost half are not achieving?
So the target percent will be, if you're looking at English Language Arts, the percent proficient will be the percent of all third through 10th graders that are proficient on the state exam, meaning they score at least a Level 3 out of 5 on the state ELA assessment, which will be the FAST assessment this year.
Okay, so, so your target is, is that, so that's achievement. So, so, so that would become an A if, if 40% were not successful?
Yes, sir. So an, an A grade from the state of Florida means that you've achieved 62% of the possible points on your district grade. So that's how the grading mechanisms work. Again, we matched our performance against the top-performing districts in the state, and when you average the top-performing districts in the state of Florida, they average about 57% achievement right now in ELA on all their assessments.
Wow. So, so almost half, or say 40%, something like that, in that realm, are not succeeding?
Yes, sir.
Wow, wow. And wow, what do you attribute that to? I, I would think we were, I would think, you know, we would essentially be successful at every level, and, and, you know, there were always a couple of kids that didn't pass, for example, but was nowhere near 40% of the class.
Yeah, and I totally get your sentiment. We want 100% of our students to be proficient in everything, and that's the ultimate goal. By the time they finish high school, we want 100% of them to be proficient in graduating high school with a standard high school diploma. The reality is, we know when we look at K-12 public The reality is, we know when we look at K-12 public education, our students come to us in kindergarten at all different levels of abilities. We have students in kindergarten that can read proficiently, and we have students that come in that don't know their alphabet or their numbers. And we have to work to move all of those students in the same direction to achieve the same goal at the end of the day.
Wow, yeah. Well, kindergarten, I couldn't read either. You probably couldn't either in kindergarten, but maybe you could. But wow, I'm shocked. I'm actually shocked. This does focus it. I assumed we were doing much, much better than that. And I would recommend, at least for a county like Marion County, that we shoot a whole lot higher than that, that we, I can't imagine, I can't imagine running a company where we would, we would fail 40% of the product. I just can't imagine it. Now, I may be naive. You know, I, I, you know, I'm not, I'm, I'm just shocked. That means that 40% of our population failed in their early, you know, in their learning years in our schools. Goodness, we got to look at that. We got to look at that.
Dr. Gullett?
Thank you. Board Member Browning, if I may, I want to be very clear about something. The goal is 100%. Every student, that's, that's our vision, right? It's helping every student succeed. Every child means every child. For the purposes of the metrics that Mr. Whitehouse is sharing, he is looking at and representing the targets of the proficiency rate as they pertain to us reaching that top tier. Now, the state has also been clear, most recently discussed this at a prior work session, about the averages and the distribution, if you will, of grades will still be in a tiered approach. So even if we attain that, the bar goes higher. Our goal is 100%. We strive to reach every child. Every child needs to be proficient. And I think it may be helpful for Mr. Whitehouse to talk perhaps in more defined proficiency, because sometimes that's also misunderstood. So if we could do that. But I want to be clear, 100%, every child needs to be literate and have those fundamental and foundational skills to be successful.
Yeah, I, thank you, Superintendent, because I, I'm with you there. Outcome, an A outcome must be success. I can't, I cannot abide. I couldn't put my name on a 40% failure rate. I just couldn't do it. Regardless of the issues at play, I think we need to attack those and attack them so hard that we come out on the positive side. So please elaborate on it like the Superintendent just did. I get that. We're going at 100. Now I'm, now we're, now we're together. I get that. And I understand Babe Ruth, like, made the Hall of Fame failing three-quarters of the time, you know, or two-thirds of the time. You only bat, say, 300 is a huge success, but not in education. Not in education. I just can't abide that.
And Mr. Whitehouse, I would like for you to elaborate a bit on proficiency, but just ahead of doing that, I want to expound a bit on, on Mr. Browning's concerns. So I was going to comment that I'm grateful on the new chart that you've given us, that you've shown us not only the target, but what the baseline is. And so I'm grateful that hopefully moving forward, we will always have that baseline. Because honestly, Mr. Browning, if you look at this, the purpose of the reason that we approved a strategic plan, and all of us, all five of us approved a strategic plan, saying that our goal in five years was to reach that 60%. So we all had that, and we all knew that that's actually what we were trying to do. Because if you look at the baseline, right now we have 60% or, you know, 50-some-odd percent of our students that are not reaching those goals. And so for us to move the needle to get to 60 or 65% in a five-year time span, or now four-year time span, since we're heading in that direction, will be significant achievement. And then once we approve an Achieve 2030 Plan or 2031 Plan, the needle then moves that much further. But in order for us to say, we want to go from 44% proficiency in English Language Arts to 100% proficiency in one year, is not logical and is not doable, frankly. So again, I appreciate the dialogue, and I appreciate where we're elaborating on this particular item, but we all, as a board, approved the Achieve 2026 Plan that includes the targets where they are. If we needed to have additional conversation at that time when we approved it, that would have been one thing. But looking at the baseline, we actually can see where we are right now, and how much it's going to take to get us from 44 to 57, or from 43 to 60. That's a long way, that's a large gap that we're anticipating and striving for and doing everything we can now, putting those plans in place that we will be at those levels at least by 2026, if not before. So maybe you can elaborate a bit on how proficiency is calculated.
Sure. Yes, ma'am. And certainly to your point, if you, if you look at the state of Florida's performance and proficiency, on average, the state improves about two or three percentage points in proficiency per year. So if you do the math from where we are to where we're going, we would have to well exceed the state average in improvement and proficiency to reach those targets. So I think we are pushing ourselves to make sure that we are working as hard as we can to improve the results of our students. When we talk about proficiency, we're talking about students' ability to perform at an acceptable grade level standard. So if I'm proficient in third-grade reading, that means I'm reading at a third-grade standard. If I'm not proficient, doesn't mean I can't read. It certainly means that I have the ability to get there, and a lot of our students are on the cusp. There are students that perform right close to grade level, and then our focus is, how do we fill in those missing gaps so that the next year, we get them closer to a grade level standard? And that's a lot of the work that we do. And when you look at those one-year learning gains, those are our opportunity to really show that even if a student isn't proficient, that we've made a lot of progress in that student's ability to perform in that subject area across that one year, so that we are inching them closer to that target of where they want to be.
Thank you.
Wow. Ma'am, yeah, I, wow, I'm so grateful that you're bringing this forward and that we're having this discussion, because that's staggering, especially going into a, an era of, of school vouchers and choice and competition. This is, this is as bad as I, I can't imagine being associated with a 44% or even, even a state. I've, I've got to go talk to the governor. This is like, whoa, wait a minute. This is something that we're accepting? And I thought we were, I, I thought we were at least up in the, you know, like graduate, like proficiency passing to the next grade. I know when I went to school, 90% more than that went to the next grade, and they, they could do that earlier grades work. You know, have we really, truly gone, Superintendent, has, has the state of Florida gone down? Has Marion County gone down where we accept 44% achievement? Is that even possible? Is that where we are?
So Board Member Browning, I think Mr. Whitehouse can give you the state numbers. We don't, we don't accept that, right? We don't accept mediocre. Again, it's back to understanding that every child, we want every child to be successful and to thrive. The really, the word I use is thrive. So they can compete, and they have every opportunity to make choices about what they want to do. State numbers, Mr. Whitehouse, I hate to put you on the spot, and I can pull them up if not, but I think, sure, the state numbers might be helpful. And yes, and yes, sir, there have been declines from the pandemic. So we have, we have seen that statewide.
Yeah, I believe, and don't quote me, but I can certainly get you the exact numbers, but I believe the state is around 52% proficient for English Language Arts. So we're, there's certainly a gap with our district, but not a monumental gap. But certainly to that point, we strive every day to make sure all of our students are performing at level.
Wow. I hope everybody's shocked, shocked like I am. I, I hope they are, because we're looking at a five-year plan, and we were going off a previous five-year plan.
No, sir. And that's what I wanted to stress. The most important thing that we can stress right now is that this board and this leadership team put forth a five-year strategic plan that has these metrics included. And that's why we want to make sure that we have this discussion today, that we're actually measuring what we need to be measuring, and that we have the strategy behind the metrics and the tactics we're going to use. Because to my knowledge, previous boards and previous teams may not have done that. And so without having a clear target in mind as to what you're striving for, as well as those strategies and tactics, how to get there, I'm not certain how it was. And frankly, it was, it was a revelation to me whenever I became a board member and sat here. I mean, we all own the grade that we have right now, because we've all been a part of it this whole past school year. We do. But it was actually a revelation to me, whenever you look at in the reverse, while we're so grateful that we have 44% of our students that are reaching proficiency, that means 56% is they're not. And so if you flip it, it certainly sounds much, much worse. And so I understand the conversation, Mr. Browning. I do think we potentially can, can keep moving on through this, because we do have several metrics that we need to talk about. But it is staggering. But what also is staggering to Mr. Browning's point is that 62% proficiency is a state-level A grade. And so the state already understands that you'll have 30-plus% of your students not proficient, and you would still be achieving at an A-level district grade. And the other point that I would like to express because of something Mr. Browning mentioned, of some of our school choice options, which we all learned about recently, one of our charter schools is actually a D school, and a couple of our other charter schools are in that C school range as well. So they're at kind of the same level. We, as a district, we're just one point away from a B as a district. And so while school choice certainly is an option, the results that are coming out of some of our schools that are also having to go by the same standards that we are to some degree is basically the same. Or if not similar, it could be actually worse in some of our school choice options. Just to comment on what you mentioned. But at this point, I would actually like for Mr. Whitehouse to continue. Since we have talked all about the student success, maybe we can talk about the safe and positive learning at this point?
Yes, ma'am.
And I think, I agree, but I think at this critical point, it's important to have this level of understanding as we go forward. Failure is just not an option. It's all about outcome, for me. I want positive outcome if I'm associated with anything. And I'm actually sitting on the board of an organization that is, wow, it's, it's a failure. And we have to address that. I think that if we don't admit to that, and ever call something like that an A, I, I am fuming right now. I have to go see the governor. I have to go see Manny Diaz. I have to go address this, because there's something really, really failing about this. So, and it's, this is not on your shoulders, sir. Absolutely. I know you're, you're reporting, and it's, it's accurate. And I, I, I praise you for having the courage to bring these things forward, and the Superintendent as well, just how fundamentally flawed it has been going forward. Because we've got to do a better job. If we're going to compete for the educational opportunity of these children in the state of Florida, in Marion County specifically, we've got to think at least pass 80 or 90%, 95%. I mean, no kid came home with an F failing, and that would be half the class. Back when I was going to school, that's unacceptable to me. Whether it's the change, it's the times just suddenly slid forward 50 years, and suddenly we're failing, and we accept it. No, I do not accept it, and I will, I will get to Tallahassee on this. This is, I'm shocked. Thank you. And I'm sorry to go on like that, but I'm, I'm shocked that we're at that stage. Wow.
Did you have something?
Yeah, I'm just curious where you've been the past year, because it is staggering numbers. And as a board member, as a teacher, I'm frustrated. And that's why when we go down these rabbit holes and talk about things that are, not that they're irrelevant, but I try to always get us back to the three Rs, reading, writing, you know, arithmetic. That's what's important, our students' education. So to sit up here and, you know, when we talk about different things, not saying they're not important, you know, we're budget and we're policy, but I'm, you're absolutely correct. This is unacceptable. When you see those numbers and think that that many students are non-proficient.
Totally.
And you're correct. Our names are attached to this. So there is a plan, and hopefully they're going to watch it. I'm kind of curious, though, with the progress monitoring and the state is now changing, what's this going to look like? You know, is it, how's, what's going to happen with that?
Well, so this year, the only thing we're going to get is proficiency rates. The proficiency rates will be connected to the current FSA achievement levels. So our achievement levels will look very similar to what we're used to. They'll do standard setting this summer. So next school year, we'll actually see new cut scores. So, you know, depending on where this ends up, we may have to readjust, but that, that's really what we're, so wait and see right now.
Okay.
Mr.?
I believe that's why we have a defined strategic plan. And I think that's why we're being 100% transparent on our challenges. And I think that's why every single one of us sitting up here is well aware of our challenges. The question becomes, what are we doing about it? And that's why you're here, and I'm really looking forward to that piece of the conversation.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, if we move on to Goal Two, our safe and positive learning environment, the first thing I want to draw your attention to is our outcome metric, looking at reducing alternative placements and expulsions. Certainly both worthwhile goals. However, if you note how they were originally listed, we had alternative placements listed as a number, and expulsions listed as a percentage. And it was unclear to the layman what exactly that percentage was representing. And so we wanted to make sure we were clear on what exactly we were targeting and where we were. So we would like to adjust expulsions to represent a number of expulsions as well, with a target just like our alternative placements, because that's easier and clearer to understand. I also want to point out, the baseline for alternative placements and expulsions was the 2021 school year, which was our online learning year, where a third of our students started at school and not even at school. So we had much lower alternative placements and expulsion rates that year than we typically did. So what we went, what we did is, we went back and looked at the last five years' worth of alternative placements and expulsions, and got an average of those five years so that we could get a little bit better baseline of how we have typically looked in terms of number of alternative placements and expulsions, and then readjusted targets so that we can get about a 30% reduction over the next five years in both of those areas. The next part, you'll see, if you look back on the original outcome metric, the outcome metric was to increase the percentage of students and staff feeling safe at school through climate survey data. Great goal. However, it's really hard to combine students and staff into one metric number, because there really are two different user groups that view school from two different perspectives. So we would recommend breaking that up into two outcome metrics, increasing the percent of students feeling safe as one metric, and increase the percent of staff feeling safe as one metric, because our strategies of how we address that certainly are different strategies, and we want to make sure that we're able to delineate those results. The target for that has not been set. We were to set a target last year based on survey data. However, when we released the survey data last year, we got very limited student response, not enough that we felt we could really have an established baseline based on the few number of students who did respond. And so Mr. McGowan and his team are working to get a new survey put out that will get a much better response rate, so that we can truly get a baseline of where our students are feeling with that survey result. So we'll get you that baseline data once we have those survey results. And then the last piece of that is the increase in the percentage of schools that are secured with fences, cameras, and door buzzers. When I talk with safe schools through that goal and really what the data was that we were reporting, what we actually want to report is the percent of our schools that have all three in place. So they have fences in place, they have cameras, and they have door buzzers. Originally, our baseline was the percent that had any of the three, which isn't truly showing the percent of our schools that are hardened. So we went back and readjusted our baseline. The goal is still 100%. We are still making We are still making progress towards 100%, but that's why you see that adjusted baseline number for schools that are hardened.
Mr. Whitehouse, if you don't mind pausing there. Board, do you have any questions about the safe and positive learning and working environment? Ms. Thrower?
Yes, I actually have quite a bit. And it comes from, well, I'll just start where we are. Reducing the chronic absenteeism rates, I am less concerned about reducing the number of alternative placements and reducing the number of expulsions than I am about reducing chronic absenteeism. Because if kids are at school regularly, chances are, they're going to be more engaged. Chances are, they're going to make more progress. Chances are, we'll start getting more towards our number of proficiency, and we'll have less behavior issues. And I know that this district is 100% committed to making sure that our numbers are the numbers. And what I need to say here is really important, because what I'm hearing from parents when it comes to student behavior is, even if it's my kid, if they're not behaving on the bus, they need to be addressed. And it needs to be strict. And we need to have expectations, and we need to stick to them. You know, in the 1970s, any kid that didn't behave, it was real easy to get them out, real easy. And we didn't even serve special needs kids. The playing field is so different now than it was back then, but I think we've lost some things along the way. I think that we've tried to be all things to all people and all families, when in the end, our focus is providing a fiscally responsible education to each and every child, and having very clear and defined goals, which is why I'm so glad, as a long-term employee, that we finally have a strategic plan that is actually being actively implemented, and that there is baseline data and target data. Some may say that it's not ambitious enough, but when you look at where we are, incremental progress can then be celebrated. And when people feel like, it's like that rolling stone, you know, it gains momentum. And then, people become even more committed to the end goal. But I just think that we need to be real careful about this, reducing the number of alternative placements. Personally, I couldn't care less about that. What I care about is, are students coming to school regularly? Are they behaving when they're here? And if they're not, what are we doing about it?
Ms. Campbell?
I agree. If I may, Board Member Thrower, you brought up a great point, and I want to make sure that I say this, the alternative placements and expulsions are not about lowering the bar, the expectation, in any way. What we've been finding and looking at the data are the patterns and trends of, it's about education. It's about prevention. Students who are making choices that don't even realize the implications of those choices, it's back to those great Rosebus conversations we've had about the code of student conduct, and educating our students as a preventive matter. So, I just wanted to elaborate on where that came from.
Right. But this day of over and over and over, chances, and not matching, it doesn't help our kids, because it's not preparing them for the real world. It's always better to be five minutes early than one minute late, you know? And so, if we're truly going to mirror what kids need in society to be successful, then it's not a matter of being punitive, it's being realistic. You know, this is what it is, and let's do it.
I agree. There's a saying, and it says, "The data doesn't lie, but the ones manipulating it do." And so, when I see numbers like that, sometimes that raises a flag with me, like the alternative placements and stuff. And I would caution this board moving forward, too, you might want to pay attention to another county that didn't necessarily report things that they should, and now they're being investigated. So, extremely important that we're always truthful, honest, and accurate with data. Always.
And I believe we are that district, and I believe we're going to stay that district, because that's who we are. That can become a very slippery slope, that in the scope of just wanting to keep kids in school, things end up being, they end up getting too many chances. That is my point.
That the behavior tolerance level in certain schools is different than the behavior tolerance level in other schools, perhaps? And so, then that, in turn, can skew the data, if we're focusing solely on a data point, as opposed to actually what's best for kids. That's how I would elaborate on that, and I hear that. I see exactly what you guys are saying. I understand, and this board member understands, why we would want to include it, because the ultimate goal is trying to ensure we're providing a safe and positive learning environment. And if that is one of those metrics that we can say, students perhaps are not having the discipline matters that would result in alternative placements and expulsions. Perhaps it's a referral item that we should be considering as well, instead of just alternative placements and expulsions. I see, as we continue this strategic plan, as we add metrics, I think we can continue to add, because on Ms. Thrower's point about chronic absenteeism, we see the daily absenteeism reports, and it actually makes me want to say, not just chronic absenteeism, but we want the attendance rates for all of our schools to be at 95% or above every day. I mean, for us to achieve that would change this district immeasurably, frankly. And we see what the numbers are. I'm grateful, yesterday, district-wide, we were a little more than 93%. That's the first day that we've been there in weeks, it feels like. But we still have some of those schools, and unfortunately, it's our struggling schools that continue to have struggles with absenteeism. So, yes, chronic absenteeism, I think, is one dataset that we need to look at, because we have students that have chronic absenteeism, absolutely. But if we also looked school-wide, district-wide, and set a metric, and perhaps this isn't for today, but if we set a metric at 95% attendance, instead of calling it absenteeism, talk about attendance. And we want to strive for 95% attendance in every school, every day, or whatever, you know, 95%. I don't know. I'm throwing all kinds of numbers out, but again, I think if we, some of these, again, feel punitive. As we've talked about, alternative placements and expulsions, those are the punitive side, as well as chronic absenteeism, that's the punitive side. So, how can we flip that? Reducing the number of referrals, perhaps? Because referrals then lead to expulsions and alternative placements, and same thing with attendance. If we're striving for a positive attendance rate, as opposed to reducing a chronic absenteeism. Maybe it's for another day, maybe it's for another conversation, but I appreciate the dialogue of the board on that. Mr. Browning, did you have additional dialogue?
Absolutely. Wow, you know, we've touched on, we've touched on, this really goes to the heart of essentially what we do, and I think we have fallen into, this is a general thought, but I think we've fallen into a, into an assignment, if you will, of not believing in the way society is right now, and that we're becoming the policeman. We're becoming, I hear it said in a school, and I hear this, it's sort of standard. They may not be learning exactly, they didn't actually get the message, they didn't, the feedback wasn't proper, wasn't, they didn't have comprehension, but they weren't causing any trouble. I think we've gotten into almost a, I don't want to use the term "police state," but a police environment, like a, I used to sit on a juvenile justice board. That was a whole different world. That was like reform school when I was a kid. A whole different world, and I think right now, we're worrying about like 44,000 referrals. You can't, you can't. That's almost a predator assignment. You got, you know, to be writing 44,000 referrals is, you can't be also educating while you're writing 44,000, with 44,000 students. I think we have to address these things, and on a five-year plan, that's a great, we can't sugarcoat it. We can't, it's about outcomes, and you're not going to have a good outcome if, in fact, you know it's a horrible situation, and I see, I just see angst, you know, we can't, this isn't right, we need to tighten this up, we need more discipline, we need, it's like society is so bad. I think we need to go back and admit the problems we're having, and maybe make the schools smaller, maybe it's the smaller classes, maybe it's, maybe go back a little bit to the way it was when all of us went to school. I mean, we didn't have this issue. It just didn't happen. So, society has kind of changed, and I think we've changed with it. Like, door buzzers, cameras, and fences. There's, we've got to have some dialogue around that. These things come to us like a day before they need to be approved or sent up to meet a criteria at, in Tallahassee for safe schools. I can't get even a safe crosswalk in front of a school in my district. I just can't get it. And we're talking about fences, I mean, the whole thing is open. It isn't, you could walk in there, the whole thing is open. Now, there is a fence all the way around it, but the whole front of the school is open. Everything is open, and there's no crosswalks, there's no indication that it's the front of a school, no stop sign, no yield sign, no, it's just not functioning, and we haven't been able to get that addressed. Referrals, once you enter the school, we shouldn't be writing 44,000 referrals. Something is really wrong. I mean, you're, how in the world could you be teaching and doing that at the same time? Something is really wrong, and I think, to be transparent, we have to say what, we have to define the problem, not make it like, boy, we're doing a great job. I think that maybe society is, should get into this conversation, and I think the way we include society in the conversation is not to make it as positive as we can, but make it, you know, like 44,000, it's one for every student. I never got a referral that I know of, I don't even know if we did that, back in the day, when anybody here on this board was in school.
And nobody wrote down anything.
Yeah, well, you went to the principal.
And there wasn't social media, and there wasn't a cellphone to someone record the video. Right, I mean, to your point, Mr. Browning, society has changed, it just has. And the way we went to school, and having paddlings, as Ms. Thrower mentioned, those kinds of things happened. There were repercussions in the school, and students felt it, literally. There weren't exterior pressures of social media, and the peer pressure levels were different because of how they were recorded. That's a product of society, the way we're dealing with smartphones, while you're grateful to have that in the palm of your hand, to have access to the Library of Congress, you also have access to all of the social media, as well as the cameras and the recordings of videos and things that want, that cause students to want to have notoriety, as opposed to discipline. And so, I hear all of that, and I understand, things are just different than they were when we were in school, and it's always the way it's going to be.
I agree, I agree. And here's my point, that we must not gloss over those problems. We must address them head-on and say, look, the reason, we're Ford Motor Company, the reason wheels are falling off the vehicle is because they're just not designed right, or things have changed. We've got Model T wheels on something that's now going 80 miles an hour. You know, there's fundamental problems. I see them here, I see, and I'll bring up, it was brought up, you know, we get, we go down rabbit holes. I think that we need to address issues that come up on a regular basis at a business meeting. We need to state the problem, and we've got this, what I call, what I consider, my personal description, is a complete misuse of a thing called a consent agenda, where individual items are not discussed on a regular basis. I think that that falls into this discussion dramatically, because if you can't discuss the item, you are never going to fix it. And if you do have problems in society, going to the truancy thing, we talked about, what is it, Georgia, having a better system. I would like to see that issue brought up, and get the judges over here, get the, you know, bring it up. Like, at the level of truancy, that is just, it's just, you can't, if you were running a business and the people didn't show up, you know, you'd be fired. I mean, it just wouldn't go forward. So, the fact that we're going forward and we accept these things, I think accepting these problems, I got notes all over the place, everybody's on target, but we're accepting things.
We are?
Ms. Browning, yes.
I'm not sitting here.
I know, with all due respect, I think that the whole purpose of this work session is, in fact, because we are discussing these things in a transparent manner.
How did we get to the?
And because we now see the baseline versus the target, I think that actually helps add that additional layer of clarity to not just what our goal is, we approved the strategic plan with a goal in mind. We didn't necessarily see exactly what it was going to take for us to get to that goal. So, I'm grateful now that we can see that. I do think there might be additional items that we want to add to this. I'm not sure when would be the appropriate time to do that, perhaps just the recommendations and thoughts that we've brought forth today, then can go back to the team, and you might want to bring it back in three months and give us a couple of other ideas with the, you know, positive thought on attendance, and I don't know if you all had others that you wanted to consider, but I would like to see if we could move on from this.
Let me finish, if you will, indulge me, let me finish, because I'd like to know, on that issue, truancy, I'd like to know, why is that, and we have professionals here. Superintendent, what is the problem? Why are these children not at school? What is the best guess, top 10 reasons, for, top three reasons? Why? I mean, what should we target? What should we do? Do we, what do we need to do? Do we need the judges in here? I heard that you can't get an item through, the, our legal team was talking about, you can't move these things through quickly. They take a long time before, or maybe it was safe schools were saying. Is that the problem? Is there no real control, societal control? I know if you missed a day when I was in school, and you missed two days, something started happening, right then, right there, you better get to school, or something was going to happen bad, probably mom and dad. You know, it had to happen. I'm just not tolerant of, you know, all these huge numbers. I just can't take it. I can't take it. I need to know the top things, because we can get, we can get to the judges, we go right over to the courthouse and talk to them, and they're, I know, if we're struggling like this, they're struggling. And I know they would be happy to get involved. And, you know, whatever, implement those top three things. I am not willing to go forward and say, wow, we have this terrible problem, nobody's going to school, or a huge number of kids aren't going to school. Not only does that impact dollars, and I'm a businessman, but I'm on a school board, and a school board is to educate. And nobody's going to get educated if they're playing hooky. You can't do that.
Mr. Browning, I do believe part of your answer is actually with the legislature, and what Ms. Thrower and we've put forth, and as I go tomorrow for the advocacy committee to talk about if truancy, and we want to mirror the Georgia plan, and all of those kinds of things, I think that is part of it. The legislature could be part of the answer.
Could be part of it, yeah.
Could be part of the answer. Dr. Gullett, I don't know if it's putting you on the spot to actually say some of the areas, I know in talking to principals, some of your answers, Mr. Browning, actually could come from a principal directly, as I've sat down with multiple principals. They can tell you what the issues are in their specific schools.
But we're on the board, and this is a universal thing that I'm hearing.
I understand, Mr. Browning, but in some schools, the area, the geographic area causes the challenges, and the cultural population, whatever that might be, but Dr. Gullett, if you, without putting you on the spot, if you could give us some ideas.
Certainly, no, thank you, Ms. Campbell. And Board Member Browning, it's a great question.
Certainly, no, thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. Board Member Browning, it's a great question, and it's not a simple answer, and I think Vice Chair Campbell is expressing this, that it varies from site to site, and it also is not simple to answer, because we don't always have the reasons outwardly, right? They're not, they're not articulated. That is why we have a dedicated team of each of our schools, who know the families, who know the students, and work closely with them. Sometimes there are extenuating circumstances that are happening in their lives. Sometimes students are at work when we want them at school, educating on the importance of being in school. So, there's a far-reaching reasons why that is so. Our goal is to educate them on how important it is to be in school. If they're not present, we can't teach them. The valuing of education is so important, and working with our families to help them, to help us, in partnership, is really important, but there are many different reasons. Just, just as you all had the conversation about chronic absenteeism, that is hugely impactful in recovery of the proficiency conversation you had earlier. It's hard to make, excuse me, it's hard to make up that time, and even when you miss a day here or there, that adds up very quickly, and those gaps widen, and sometimes they're not recoverable, and oftentimes it takes years. And so, it's really important for us to look at the data. We can certainly provide data to you that we have, but understand that the reasons behind each and every absence may not be provided to us. It may be what we know, because those closest in the schools know, but it may not be something that is shared.
Well, Superintendent, when I was in school, when anybody here, if you played hooky, you played hooky, right? I mean, that's what it was. That's what we called it. I don't know, do we still call it that, or do we make up some kind of a, an excuse?
Mr. Browning, the majority-
If you're playing hooky, you're playing hooky, you're not going to school.
The largest numbers of our absenteeism and chronic absenteeism right now in the district are actually at the elementary level. So, our largest numbers are element, so that's not kids that are teenagers that are playing hooky, it's students that perhaps live within two miles and are not being driven to school, or perhaps they missed the bus, and no one has a vehicle to be able to transport them to school. But, I mean, there's, there could be multiple reasons. Again, each school has a different reason, and that's why I, as a board member, would like to actually add a separate line item here, not just about chronic absenteeism, because we understand those students, we've identified the fifteen, thirty, seventy-five students that we know per school, that are those chronic absenteeism offenders. Their families, that's why we have homeschool liaisons, that's why we have social workers and social workers, that's why we have all of those folks that have very strong relationships, in some cases, with those individuals. But, I believe that it goes further than just those ten, twelve, seventy-five students. If we were looking school-wide, every school at ninety-five percent plus attendance every day, or, you know, four out of the five days of the week, or whatever that might be, whatever that metric you all determine that you want to bring back to us, I think that also will help us move this needle even more, so than just looking at chronic absenteeism.
And I wholeheartedly support that. When we talk about every child, every day, the team hears me say this all the time, every minute matters, every child matters. So, I wholeheartedly support including a metric for daily attendance, and that will help our schools measure their daily attendance and support that.
So, that we as a board are interested in what, because we look at it, and we talk about it, you know, and I was looking yesterday, and I'm looking especially at our schools that are the transformation schools, and where their attendance is still continuing to struggle, and those are things we're looking at every day, but to actually say it's a part of our strategic plan, and this board and this team is monitoring that, and that's a goal we want to hit, I think that's important.
Yeah, we have to get, we have to get to the point where you're expected to be at school, if it's a child, that is, as our Assistant Board Chair was saying, if it's a younger elementary school, then those parents, somebody has to, that's why you have a truancy law, somebody has to address that in a way that is not, that eliminates the failure. What I have a problem with is the failure, the acceptance of that, that that's the standard now, and that we accept somebody not coming to school. I'm sorry, that's unacceptable to me, and I, maybe I'm just totally out of touch, but if somebody is chronically not coming to school, a judge has to be involved. That would have happened when I was in school, and what happened? Did something happen? Did something happen? What happened?
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. King.
Let's figure it out. I'm not going to, I'm not going further until we get to that answer, because you can't run a school, if the students don't come, and if the truancy laws don't count, then something's come off the, you know, the trolley's gone off the track. And I think we need to talk about that. We talk about, I'm interested in outcomes.
No, go ahead, Ms. King, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I was going to say, you're right, the trolley has, is off the track, it's been off the track for years, this board, before you. That's been a high concern about the student attendance, and there's some students that, if you probably saw the numbers, you would be, I don't even have words for it, and I think it's not just one area, I think it's multiple. The school, I encourage you, go speak to your principals, speak to teachers, what happens when they have a student that is not in their classroom for seventy-five days. Right now, you want to know, you want to know what happens? It's an easy call for you and us, but basically, they're told, eh, no. I mean, they know it, they, the teachers know it, the principals know it, and they're not getting the support, and they haven't been getting the support. And that's why you'll see, like, Ms. Thrower, well, actually, I think it's all, before it was Ms. Thrower, it was me, before that, it was Ms. Stacy. I mean, this has been years in the making, and, you know, hopefully, you'll get a good judge, and then hopefully you have good employees at the district level that will support that, and be honest with the numbers, and turn those numbers in. I mean, it's, there's a lot of problems, it's not just one, and so, it is unacceptable, and hopefully, moving forward, and I like Ms. Campbell's idea of, you know, putting that in, but, yeah.
Legal, legal, can, may I? I'd like to hear, what, what do you see? I mean, you're our legal guy, what is going on? How does somebody go three weeks? And then we're kind of wringing our hands. What's going on?
Before we go to Mr. Powers, I would like to go to Ms. Thrower, because I know she has accompanied Mr. Powers on a couple of these, speaking with judges and so forth. Ms. Thrower?
Thank you, and this is an area where Board Member Browning and I are in a hundred percent agreement, along with the rest of this board. And, you know, we're sitting here having tough conversations, that's what we were elected for, and we have a lot of good things going on in our district, some amazing things that are going on in our district. We just heard about them in terms of hurricane organization. There isn't anything that this board isn't willing to take on, or this district isn't willing to take on, which is exactly why we have a defined strategic plan. So, I am confident, for the first time probably in my working life in this district, that we are going to tame this beast. And I love your idea, it jumped out to me too, about, well, chronic absenteeism, yeah, you know, we need to get those chronic ones, and get that taken care of, but we also need the overall, the positive of, you know, increasing our overall attendance to ninety-five percent, or whatever that number ends up being, and I, so, I'm sure that's going to come back to us shortly as part of this plan. There are grapefruits in the garden hose when it comes to truancy, and it is something that this community, and I'll say "community" because we all have responsibility in it, has to face, and we can't just keep kicking the can down the road. And, you know, in conversation with Dr. Gullett, as recently as two days ago, thinking about future work sessions, my ask was, we really need to get the right people here, which are the involved parties, at every level, speaking to your point about judges, speaking to your point about the sheriff, speaking to your point about the chief. These kids that aren't in school are likely going to be doing things that society wishes they wouldn't. So, that's why it is a community problem. There is overload everywhere in this system, which speaks to a system issue, but systems can be fixed. And with that, I'm ready to hear from Attorney Powers as well.
We currently have scheduled for October twenty-first truancy status hearings. Those are hearings in which case a student had been previously a judge truant, and therefore, parents have to come back for regular status updates. Those are the ones that are in the enforcing compliance phase of trying to ensure that, you know, the student is going to be in attendance, or the parent must present doctor's note when it's, when they're not. They can't just write a letter saying Johnny was sick today, or Johnny missed the bus, or whatever. It's, there must be some actual documentation of why. It's gotten to a point where it's, where it's beyond just your mom or dad being able to write an excuse note. And we actually begin that process quite early in the system. I mean, after a student's gone for even a, you know, a few days, over the course of a grading period, that initiates a process by which there's communication with parents in the form of letter, and then if truancy, or if absenteeism continues, then there is a period at which there is involvement of social, school social workers, who make multiple home visits, find out what the problem is, speak with the parents and guardians, and try to determine what issues there might be, whether services are needed that will fix that problem, and the team is out there trying to ensure that that happens if necessary, again, pretty early on in the process. Once that has not met with success, then if there's continued and ongoing multiple absences, many times the problems the team has is that it's extremely difficult for them to maintain communication with the parents or caregivers. They make their attempts, and they document going to the house, making phone calls at the numbers they've got, sending mail, doing everything they can, and finding it to be extremely difficult to maintain communication.
You put that in a timeframe, is that like, you started with the three days or something like that?
I don't, I don't have-
You have a, when do you get in front of a judge, or when does, when does something actually happen to, like it did when I was in school, or when you were in school?
The best, the best numbers as far as how many days the social work team, or the school decides to, or the procedures by which they pick this particular number of days before going into those other interventions, I couldn't give you that data. That's something that I'd have to have someone else.
You have to guess?
No, I don't, I don't want to guess on information like that. But, it is relatively rapid early in the system. Where legal comes in is when we are doing the truancy, we're talking about cases where, we've got twenty-one truancy cases coming up here, on the twenty-one, on the twenty-first, status update cases, and I'll tell you that among that group, just that group that we're dealing with, when the students were initially filed as truant, the students, this is from last, some of them are from last year, the student was filed as, as truant, and was filed last year, they were, they're now in the phase of being in a status update and monitoring, because it's not just, I mean, we have to maintain a period in which they are, in which we see that there is compliance, and that's not just, okay, now they've been attending school for two or three weeks, there is a period of compliance once there is a court system. So, I'm not, let me be clear, I'm not saying the cases that we're filing on, that we're dealing with on October twenty-first, for example, are ones that are, are just now entering the system. I'm talking about, those are status update cases. Those are ones that entered the system and were dealt with and got in front of a judge last year. So, they're still in-
Malfunctioning, they're still truant.
No, they're still, they're still in compliance phase, which means that at this point now, they are being monitored, which means that the parents have to show up, the student has to show up, add a truancy status, to find out, how are you doing in school? What are your absences?
They could be going to school.
They could be, absolutely.
Everything could be real copacetic.
Absolutely.
So, you're not talking about truance, you're talking about somebody that was, and now they're on even keel?
I'm talking about the, it depends. I mean, there are some that are, and some that are not. I'm talking about a number of cases, twenty cases that we've got coming up. Those cases, I'm just talking about our most recent status update that we're going to be doing here, those cases are cases that have been monitored, the student has been a judge truant, they've been monitored since last year, they're, over the summer, of course, then nothing much happens. When the beginning of the new school year, we are continuing monitoring student progress and finding out, are there any ongoing issues, or is there compliance? In case A, there may be compliance, in which case, that's, that's good, and we continue to monitor that progress with the court system. In case B, there may not be compliance. In that case, the court then needs to determine what happens, because at that point, it's up to the judge to determine, what happens next, when you've got a student who has been judge, a judge habitually truant, who is missing these days, and is still not in compliance with truancy statutes at the beginning of the next school year, and it's starting to happen again. And at that point, the judge has options. The judge can enforce anything up to fines, community service for a parent, all the way up to contempt. I mean, the contempt charges that can carry jail time for parents who are non-compliant. They can also order that the student and parent be subject to more ongoing and more frequent monitoring. But, many of the tools that are used to enforce compliance, they are necessarily blunt tools. You can't, there's no precision way to monitor every aspect of, this student missed one day, and therefore, what do we do at this point? If the student misses any time after they're a judge truant, the court system is, a report is made to the court, and at the next status update, which we're trying to ensure that those are going to be occurring monthly, they have been so far, at the next status update, those student, that issue is going to be addressed. We're going to find out if that was a one-off, or if that was a sign that we're, there's beginning to be a tailspin happening again. So, within this process, the one thing I do want to point out, is of the ones that we're monitoring now, and the ones that we are continuing to file, we routinely file on new truancy cases, we routinely address by status updates the ones that are in the pipeline, that have already been addressed as habitually truant, that is an ongoing and constant process. But, for example, in last years, where we were really sort of becoming more, I guess the way you'd phrase that is, we were becoming more compliant, we're trying to ensure that we were starting to crack down a little more, because we obviously had a problem with, over a period of time during the COVID response problems and the COVID pandemic, there was a problem at which you had frequent absences of students for other reasons, for medical reasons, and for COVID tests, and quarantine, and all things like that. Concurrently with that, we began making sure that we were doing everything we could to exercise our needs to get students addressed with the truancy system. At that time, and since that time, we've been increasing the number of enforcement cases that we're actually taking to the courts, and that's what's happening now. You will, if you sat in a truancy hearing, you would be surprised to see, I think, the numbers that we are dealing with in that few percent that are sort of the worst of the worst cases, and they're not few and far between, there are too many. But, it is very hard for the court, or for really anyone, to focus on a student who has missed five and six days, with anything more than what we're doing already, when in fact, the students that we're dealing with, and that they are having to focus many of their efforts on, are students that they began emphasizing when the student missed five or six days, and then it went on to not being able to communicate or contact parents, and student had missed twenty days, and then thirty days, and then fifty days, and then seventy days, and then all the way up to ninety-seven days, one of the cases I doubt, that's half of all instructional days within the school year, and then some. And, those are the, those are the realities of the worst-case scenario cases that we have, and they're not few and far between. And I think that what our team has done, in my experience, and what we're dealing with with the court system, is that that team from MCPS is addressing early, and I don't think heavy-handedly- MCPS is addressing early and I don't think heavy handedly the issues that are with immediate low number of days missed absences. But the reality is they're having to focus on the sort of worst offenders as opposed to being able to conduct everything toward the early intervention that is more likely to be useful and necessary. And in fact, we also know that some students have may miss three to five or six or eight days in a very brief period of time within one grading period, and then not miss any for the rest of the year. So it's not that every case that misses five or six or seven days is going to go on to be a case that is habitually truant. We only start to address it at some much later phase in the game. And so.
Thank you. I I.
That's.
That's a a large explanation, but it doesn't, it appears like it's considered acceptable. For me, it's totally unacceptable.
And I will tell you.
If you're going to be a week, if you're going to be a week, two weeks, as you were saying, you know, those numbers and and that can go on. Everybody's learning from that, you know, kids like to, you know, I guess parents do too. I don't know. I just don't know. I I'm what where I'm going with this is we've got an unacceptable addressing of a chronic problem. It has nothing to do with COVID. I've had it with COVID.
I was simply pointing out that was the initial that that was an area at a time when it became it added a lot of difficulties that no one had had to experience with truancy because you suddenly had the fact that students were, if they were symptomatic to any degree, going to be missing a quarantine period, or if they were in contact with other students who were or a classroom environment that you ended up with a lot of days.
Those people are not in front of a judge that had COVID. So I just don't want to go there. I'm on a I don't want to water down the problem. It's unacceptable to have 13, 15, whatever it is, number of percent, 10%. It's unacceptable, and the system's broken, and the judges need some support. The system need the legislature, I'm talking to legislature all the time. We can, we can have a conversation with these people and tell them it's absolutely unacceptable and having this conversation right now, very directly not accepting it, just not accepting it. Say, whoops, timeout here. I don't care what happened to society. I don't care about TikTok. I don't care about Facebook. I don't care about any of those things. What I care about is truancy. And we've got a truancy problem that's chronically going along, and we cannot dismiss it or wring our hands and just be all upset about it. We've got to actually do something about it. And we've got, we've got a governor, we've got a director, Manny Diaz, we've got, we've got legislators, every single one. And I have had it going through a an organization to talk for us. We've got to go straight to those people and not go to some school board association. We've got to go straight to the people that make the law. We've got to go straight, like Ms. Thoreau said, straight to the judge. We got to talk to the judge. These people need our support in order to clean up this system as far as I'm concerned. I'm kind of shocked, but okay, I heard it. You guys have heard it. I've gone on long enough. But I cannot tolerate the contrast between when Ms. King was in school and what's going on now. I cannot tolerate that. When the superintendent, she would not have her PhD or whatever she has if she was truant all this time. None of that would be happening. I would not be functioning in my life if I I tell you what, you went to school. And the judges were not shy, and it wasn't a bureaucratic thing that went on forever. We got to, we got to jump on this. Mr. Whitehouse, we got to get on this thing. We got to, we got to, we just got to say it's not acceptable. The we got to support our principals. We got to support our teachers. You can't ask a teacher to to bring forth something like algebra or reading or arithmetic or or times tables and have the student not be there. We have to just absolutely just throw down on this. This is, this is like having the the Major League Championship and none of the players show. I'm sorry, that's not going to happen under my reign. And and I just can't do it. I just can't do it. I'm having a nervous breakdown over over the tolerance of this.
Mr. Browning, not a tolerance level.
May I, Madam Chair?
Please.
I need to indicate, one of the things you said, Mr. Browning, was, and I couldn't agree more with the sentiment. But one of the things you said is we need to have the board being involved with the judges and get the, you know.
Yeah.
First of all, let me say that that's been happening. Ms. Thoreau has met with, we've sat down in private conference with the judge, with with two judges, right? And and not even and I don't mean on a on an individual case because that would be improper, but sitting down about how it is that we're going to formulate this system, how best we can make it work, what our needs are, what our problems are that we're seeing, and what we need to do moving forward to address it properly. And I will also say that currently the judge that we're working with is Judge Yeomans, and she appears to be quite conscientious in the way that she is is doing things and proceeding. But there are challenges even within the judicial court system in being able to address these problems because ultimately, ultimately, the tools you have for enforcement mechanisms are difficult tools to wield effectively. And I think that that we have an ongoing audience with with Judge Yeomans to be able to ensure that the ways that we go about targeting our truancy issues with the court system will be fulfilled. And I think that that's going to continue as part of a working relationship with the judge in order to get it more streamlined even earlier back in the process.
I appreciate you saying that and you, Ms. Thoreau, bringing it forward with your comments because this is, this is something that just can't, I will be on the phone to Judge Yeomans. I mean, that when I leave here today, before I even back out of the car, back the car out, I'll have a good conversation with the judge. And I guarantee you, she's got some suggestions that can help this board and this district solve this problem and just head it off. Just, just, just head it off. It's like radiation or something? No, stop it at the source. Just stop it cold because it's causing damage to these kids.
Ms. Thoreau.
Oh, Dr. Gull.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. Members of the board, I appreciate this discussion and supportive attendance. And to your to your suggestion, Board Member Thoreau, I whole heartily again support a work session topic because our team has been working really hard before it even gets to the truancy. So I think that would be if the board so chooses, I if it's a pleasure of the board, I would, I would suggest, yes, a work session would be great if that's.
Wonderful.
We could proceed with that. Thank you.
And I have to add, in the past, when this was addressed, it wasn't that the judges didn't want to work with the school board. I'm going to be honest and say, the school district did not do its job to get it to the judge to do their job. And that goes way back. So we can all sit here and, you know, we can say, none of this happened, and it's the judges and the system. Well, it's broken everywhere, and that does need to be addressed. And I'm not sugarcoating. I'm not playing because that's important. And, you know, in that theory, it sounds like a good process. But it sounds good on paper, but does it actually happen? Again, I'm going to encourage you, go speak to the teachers, go speak to these principals, and hopefully they'll be honest with you to give you an accurate description and everything of what's been taking place.
And I know Ms. Thoreau has a comment, but to that point, we do get the daily attendance reports. We received yesterday's attendance reports at 8:36 this morning. So thank you to Ms. Sanchez, who sends those out to us every day. Grateful for that. I, again, specifically pay attention to those transformation schools, a couple in District Two, Mr. Browning, that perhaps you might want to speak directly with the principal on how some strategies might be implemented and things specifically in those schools. To Ms. King's point that that in times past, the district may not have been doing their part in in ensuring that this was reported accurately and things were being done, also on the side of the parent and not trying to put all the blame on the parent, but in our youngest performers, oftentimes it is something in the home that is keeping the child from that. And I have heard from a principal who said, parents also know how to game the system. They also know what that magic cutoff date is, that if after three or four days, then they get a call, then all of a sudden, on the fifth day and sixth day, the kid's there, but then they are on another three or four. So they also, there are, you know, we have extenuating circumstances all across the board. So I welcome an additional work session on this. But Ms. Thoreau, you had an additional comment.
And just quickly, I have noticed excellent movement on this topic and within our schools. Our social work assistants are rock stars. Having homeschool liaisons has been incredibly helpful to try to it. In the end, you know, it's far past time to point fingers and place blame. We're looking at solving a problem that's been around for a really long time. And three or four months ago, I handed each board member sitting here copies of the Georgia Model, and it has been implemented for a while, and it has been implemented very, very effectively. And we are duplicating some of that already with our attendance response committees at particular schools. And the schools that are participating in attendance response are expanding. In Georgia, that's a requirement. And in Georgia, the judge is required. There is a judge that is assigned, you know, to the district. And so it's, it's connecting all the dots at every level. And I handed out the Georgia Model to each and every board member in hopes that this would begin to hit the front burner. We have a lot of things on a lot of burners. But in the end, the foundational things, which is attendance, and getting our kids to school, half of which ride a bus, we can solve those two problems and we'll be in much better shape. So I really do want to acknowledge the progress that has been made at the school level. And but I but I know there's still a lot of frustration. And I think I shared this a couple of weeks ago, that because in the end, it does fall to the teacher, you know, that kid's grade counts. Maybe that's why Florida is accepting 62% as an A district. You know, it speaks to a larger problem. You know, there's a lot going on that this board, and I'm sure previous boards as well, have wanted to fix. But you have to start with a document that is going to give you a roadmap and a plan and metrics so that we know where we're going and and that we're making the progress that we need to make. But the more each of us are involved in the foundational things, the quicker we'll probably get the traction that we need at a level that is even higher up than us. And when you talk about parent empowerment, there's nothing more empowering for parents than for them to know that it is 100% expected for their kids to be at school, and we will bend over backwards to make sure that we do our part. So I'll just leave that right there.
And I just want to add, I'm not pointing fingers. I'm adjusting, I'm talking about the truth, what's happening. I'm not sugarcoating. I'm not pretending like something's not here and smoke and mirrors. I'm not, like I said, no finger pointing, just addressing the cold hard facts and truth of what's been going on in this school system. And I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah. And I'd like to say, like, like, I'm not pointing fingers either. I'm, I'm, I am addressing the problem, like Judge Yeomans. She's been brought up. She needs support. She needs support. We run the school district. The judge is just making the call. Come on. She needs, she needs support. And if she needs it from the governor, that's where it'll come from. If she needs it from the legislature, that's where it'll come from. If she needs it from this district, that's where it'll come from. So I'm not pointing any fingers at any individual. I'm bringing up the problem, and we can't sugarcoat to Ms. Kelly's, Ms. King's point. We've got to call it the way it is. It is a failure of the system has drifted into this and for for maybe a lot of reasons. But we need to get to the bottom of it. And I'm not, I'm not at all willing to go forward until some of these things get addressed cleanly and clearly. And and I really like the superintendent's comment and call for a workshop, absolutely as soon as possible, because without this workshop, we would not be having this discussion right now. And that's the only way we can back up a principal. It's the only way we can back up the legislators. Every single one of those legislators is ready with a top three, a top five list, and we don't need to go through some association to know the students need to be in school, and that's the law. And that's just the way it's going to be. And I'm talking one day, two days, three days, something serious. We need a new structure. We just have to have a new structure, or you can't go forward. Because if there isn't, what do you call it, ramifications? If there isn't.
Consequences.
Consequences. Thank you, Ms. Thoreau. If there are, if there are not consequences to not going to school, I know I wouldn't have been going. I mean, clearly, there were more things to do out in the woods and what have you. But there was no choice. You went to school. And I'm not sure how we turn that corner, but I will throw my entire energy into my educational phase of my life into making sure that everybody with a play in this gets supported to the point where this gets solved. Unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you for the spirited discussion, Board. I know you've been standing there patiently, Mr. Whitehouse. I want to make one very brief comment just on something that was said. We certainly do not need any association to go through for us to determine our district wide legislative priorities. However, we also value strength in numbers. And if our priorities are the same as 20, 30, 40 districts around the state, and we all have a collective voice on a specific issue, and this very well may be one, then I think that strength in numbers can help our full legislature understand the value of the conversation. So I hope that we can get through the remaining portion of this, and then we'll take a quick break, Board. I believe these other things might not take quite as spirited of discussion. Mr. Whitehouse, if you can continue on with talent management, please.
Yes, ma'am. And I have made note of your request for the attendance rate outcome metric.
Thank you.
All right. So the only outcome metric we're looking at for Goal Three, if you look at the original outcome metric, the last one decreased the diversity gap of administrators and certified staff with the student population of the district. Again, that was one we felt needed more clarification because there's a lot of subgroups that go into that, and there's lots of different groups of employees that go into that as well. And so we wanted to really spell those out. So you will see on the recommendation that we have broken out our two largest subgroup populations, African American students and Hispanic students, and targeted each one of the employee groups, which you'll see listed under the objectives, where the objective was diverse teachers, administrators, and support staff. So we now have outcome metrics for decreasing the diversity gap for African American certified teachers with students in the district. And if you go across to the baseline and target, our student population right now is roughly 19% of our students are African American, roughly 13% of our teachers are certified teachers are African Americans. We have a 6% gap. And our goal is to get to 1% or certainly less on that gap. So the same will go for our African American administrators and district specialized staff. We actually do not have a gap with our African American support staff and students. So that one is not listed because there is no gap at the moment. And then we have three outcome metrics for our Hispanic population as well. And you can see those gaps for certified teachers, administrators, and support staff over on the far side that we'll be targeting so that we can be very transparent about where our challenges are and making sure that we're addressing each one appropriately.
Thank you.
May I?
Yes, Mr. Browning.
Yes. When you, when you arrive at these gaps, at these metrics, help me understand where that becomes a standard. When you say there is no gap, then it sounds like there's a gap somewhere else. If there isn't a gap, do you only go in one direction with it? Like, where do we get these metrics? And what are we, aren't we going for quality? And like if if every, every teacher or every, the principals, if they're, if they're black, for example, I don't see that as a problem. Is that? I don't see that as a problem. Is that, is there some metric, or is there some standard that says that we can't have 70% black individuals teaching? Is there something that puts it into race that, that is, becomes a, where do you get this? Where does it come from?
Sure. So if you recall back to the summer, DeWanna Gary actually shared with you our Title IX reporting, which is a federal reporting requirement that we have to send every year. And we report not only on the breakdown of our athletes with male-to-female athletes, but also exactly on this, the diversity gap of our employees compared to our students. Because ideally, we want our faculty to be a reflective vision of where our students are in terms of diversity. We want our students to be able to see themselves and their educators, that they can make those connections and aspire to those same types of goals. And so our objective is that, not necessarily that we certainly pick somebody only because of that, but that we are really conscientious about the ways that we're approaching that, the places that we're targeting our recruiting, et cetera, to make sure that we are mindful of how our staff looks compared to our student diversity.
Okay. So it's federal, like, is that Title VI?
Title IX.
Title IX. Titles, I understand, is Title IX, when did that come, was it after the Civil Rights Bill, '64?
I'll defer to our school board attorney on that one. I don't
I mean, I get messed up with the titles. I thought it was Title VI, but I know we have six items. One is this walk-in area. One is that we have, that we have, we achieve unitary status, and that is, all schools are the same. They meet the same criteria, whatever that is. But I don't, I don't know. I've never seen that exactly, other than opportunity, that the opportunity is there. Like walk-in, we're talking about truancy. If you can't get there, or if it's not done properly, obviously, the kid can't get there. And maybe there is no car in the family. I get that. And that's something that we have to do to maintain our unitary status. I get that. But is that where you're coming from? It's Title IX. When did that come up?
Well, you asked about whether Title VI came up before the Civil Rights Act. Title VI is Title VI of the Federal Civil Rights Act.
So, yeah, that is it. That's the one I, yeah, I reference quite often. Yes.
Right. Title IX, I mean, I'd have to, I'd have to find the first iteration of it. There was federal statutes which were conglomerated under Title IX. It looks like it was 1972. It was part of the education amendments, 1972. That was, that was when Title IX was first generated. It's been heavily amended since then, but that was the, that was the first order they created an omnibus act, which took a bunch of federal statutes that were governed by other portions of federal law and placed them into Title IX.
Oh, that's probably, just a, just a rough estimate. That's probably when we started really running into some problems. As I look back, you know, like, I don't know, when you were in school, but 1972 is probably likely, I don't, I don't know that for a fact, but I know I was, I was out of school in '59. So, all right. So we're going toward a Title IX. I'd like to, you know, we got to, we got to kind of focus in so that it isn't just some vague item up in the cloud somewhere, that we know exactly what we're talking about, because it matters. Quality of education. I know my teacher, if I go to a university or if I'm teaching, you know, they've got to qualify. Yes, we have to meet all of our goals, and I think that was Title VI, that we get unitary status. We maintain that. But if this is overriding that, for example, or no, Title VI came in in '84, I believe.
No. Title VI, Title IX governs discrimination on the basis of sex and gender. And Title, Title IX governs that. Title VI is other forms of discrimination. So they're separate portions of statute.
Okay, okay. So, so that's the issue that you're addressing.
Sure. And so I appreciate the dialogue on this. I know we had extensive conversation whenever Ms. Gary did come and talk to us. We talked about the need to address specifically this item. We did talk about this extensively in a work session when we were talking about diversity that day, when, when Ms. Gary was here. While this is a part of federal statute that we do need to try to do this, I believe it also goes to best practices and to those that are at that achieving, overachieving district level, looking at all the metrics that they are doing. While this, to some degree, speaks to the individuals in front of students, it also enhances and increases parental engagement and involvement whenever the individual that's in front of their student also looks more like their student or can speak the language of their student, speak the language of their family, et cetera. I think that's perhaps one of the additional reasons why increasing, or rather decreasing the diversity gap within our Hispanic population, that would not only help those students of that heritage, but also help parental engagement in those areas as well. So while this, to some degree, has to do with legal, federal, state statute, I think it also speaks to best practices. And where we're, part of this strategic plan is where we're trying to go and how we're trying to measure ourselves against those high-achieving districts. That's how we've created some of these metrics. And I believe that's why we've, we've included something like this in here. It does take it much further than just decreasing a diversity gap. It does actually give more concrete metrics as to where we are now, again, with the baseline, for different demographics and where we achieve to be. And so thank you for including that in this. Are we prepared to move on to fiscal?
Yeah, I'll just say, to conclude my remarks, I'll just say, unitary status means something to me, that we, segregated schools were supposed to be separate but equal, and they were found not to be equal. And to make them equal, we took and we unified all standards. And if I have them, the faculty, students, transportation, that's the walk-in zone, Stanton Weersdale, sports participation, that is where I am with this, that we have a unitary, we've achieved and we maintain and we keep our unitary status. That means it is equal. If you're going to talk about race, that's where it has to be for this board member. Other than, yeah, if there's a, if there's a law, follow it. But that isn't the guiding law in education that really came into play with the Civil Rights Act. And it's critical that we maintain, I've spent hours addressing, to little result so far, at Stanton Weersdale, transportation, which is right there. And we could easily lose our unitary status for the entire district over that. And it just needs to be addressed. So I would like to see that as part of your, your metrics, because that's the key, unitary status and no discrimination when it comes to a historically segregated population in school and environment. The walk-in zone, which is, whoops, a mile, I guess. Maybe it's two miles.
And that point, Mr. Browning, has been driven quite a bit, doesn't deal specifically with talent management at this juncture. So
Faculty, faculty, that's, that's one of the metrics.
Understood. But walk-in zone has nothing to do with this strategic plan and that item. Got it. Okay. Moving on to fiscal and operational efficiency. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So if you look at the first outcome metric there, it was improved student access to devices and bandwidth. Again, it's hard to combine those two items into one measurement. And so in talking with our technology team, we really want to focus in on our student access to devices, more specifically portable devices, because originally, when we were looking at our numbers, we were counting any computer on our campus as a device. But as we saw last week, when Westport had to flip to online instruction, a desktop wouldn't help a student out very much. But we wanted to make sure that we are getting all of our schools to a one-to-one status. And so the outcome metric has shifted now to be portable devices for our student use in the classroom and at home. The second outcome metric on there was improving average daily bus driver attendance, which is certainly an admirable goal, and we want to make sure that we are working that direction. However, in discussion with transportation, if we achieved 100% attendance and none of the buses arrived on time, we actually have not helped student success at all. And so we would like to move the average daily bus driver attendance to a strategy to help us meet our goal. But the ultimate goal is actually going to be increasing the percentage of buses that are arriving to school on time. And so you'll see on that metric, I have added in our baseline where we currently sit at 85%, and our target, of course, is to get to 100%. And when we say on time, we don't mean the buses are pulling in right as the bell is ringing. We mean that the buses have arrived at the prescribed time so that students have enough time to get fed at breakfast and make it to their classroom prior to being tardy to school. And so that's really the metric that we would like to look at for this area of fiscal and operational efficiency. The other piece that's on there, share with the board annual savings for the self-funded health plan versus the fully insured plan. That's really a strategy, because once it's done, it's done. There's no way to measure that on an ongoing basis. However, in talking that through with Ms. Boston Ellis, our ultimate goal is to get to that increased fund balance. And if we are saving money on our health insurance, absolutely will help us as well in increasing our fund balance. So we would like to shift that over to a strategy, still something that we're going to do, but a strategy, we're really measuring the fund balance as our outcome metric.
Thank you. If there's no comment there, then we'll move on.
I have comment. On the buses, that is, that is something, if anything gets calls, is the high number, where I get calls, it's chronic missing that first class and the frustration that is associated with transportation. That is number one. And again, totally unacceptable, because you can't put that back. You can never give back. Ms. Kelly has talked about that, Ms. King has talked about that several times, that once it's lost, once educational opportunity is lost, you can't get it back. 85%, we've got to just, we've got to just have a nervous breakdown over that. I'm sorry. Sorry for the metaphor, but you gotta, we've got to just put a roadblock in front of accepting 85% for any circumstance. I don't care if we got to double the price, the salaries to the teacher, to the bus drivers. I don't care what we have to do, but if we can't get a student who wants to be there, the parents want them to be there, and we can't get them there, 85% is not acceptable. It has to be 100%, unless there's some catastrophic reason, real anomaly of why it didn't happen. 85%, Superintendent, I'm, I'm just adamant about that. I know I've sent several people over to you, that if you chronically miss a class, you don't get it back. And that's how we fail. That's how that student fails. And I don't want to, I don't want to approve something that accepts 85%. I'll, I'll start it at 99%, 99.9%.
Actually, the target is 100%. If you look in the target line, so we're not approving 85%. We're not approving that.
Well, we're accepting the
No, sir. No, sir.
Accepting the baseline.
We, we are noting the baseline. We are not accepting, just like we're not accepting 44% ELA proficiency. We're not accepting it. We're acknowledging it and noting it, but we're not accepting it.
Well, I want outrage over 85%. Outrage over the 85%. That's what I mean by acceptance. It's, we need outrage over that. The kind of outrage you feel if your son or daughter does not get to that class in some chronic reason. And it tends to happen to the same people repeatedly because of the anomalies associated with the route, or maybe rural nature, or whatever it is.
Well, we have to continue to acknowledge that 85%, frankly, is improvement. And so we're continuing to move that needle. Our goal is 100% absolutely. But just as our previous goal talked about bus driver attendance, bus driver absenteeism, we've talked about bus driver, I know in talent management, we just talked about a couple of weeks ago, about how our bus driver vacancies has gone down significantly. So there are things that we're doing to address these issues, and I understand the dialogue and the concern. I appreciate that the team has acknowledged that the metric needed to shift, that just talking about driver attendance is a tactic. It's a, you know, it's a strategy. Then you come up with tactics. It's not actually the metric of ensuring student success. And so I'm grateful that the metric is shifting for the strategic plan. I think it's exactly what it needs to be, that our target certainly is 100%. But acknowledging that currently we sit at 85% does show there is a gap. And obviously, this is a plan for 2026, in hopes that we will achieve that target much, much sooner than 2026. And that's why we're putting additional strategies and tactics. Ms. Thrower, I believe you had a comment.
Yes, thank you. This is an area where we can definitely acknowledge improvement. This is certainly not the first time that this topic has hit our radar. We've had multiple work sessions on what we can do to increase the on-time delivery of students both to and from school. That's something I'd like to propose as a little change, because not only is it really important for kids to get to school on time, it's also really important for them to get home on time for all kinds of reasons, and especially safety. So I'll say that again, as a suggestion, increase the on-time delivery of students to and from school. To 100% is our target. And I appreciate everyone on this board being willing to tackle this in such a direct way, and increasing salaries, and really putting the manpower out there to work on routing and work on communication and getting that "Here Comes the Bus" app and making sure it's functional. This is an area where, as a school board member, I'm very, very happy with the direction that we're going. I have no doubt that we are going to reach that 100% or very close to it long before 2026, and I look forward to the next update.
I have a question about that, the 85%. Where, where and when did you get that baseline?
So it comes from the GPS tracking system, which we're going to get to the key performance indicators in just a moment. But Ms. Rora provided that based on our GPS tracking system, and it actually logs when buses arrive at school. And if they're after the prescribed mark of their arrival, then their count is late, which prescribed mark could actually be before the school day starts. So if the prescribed arrival time is 20 minutes before the school day starts, and they arrive 15 minutes before the school day starts, they're technically late, because that cuts down the amount of time for us to be able to get those students fed and to class on time.
Okay. But my question, I need to rephrase it then. When did we get that data? Is that for this school year?
This school year, yes, ma'am.
So it started, like, from, what, August till
Yes, ma'am.
Nine weeks. Then nine weeks. So that's where this came from?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. That's
And so, again, that 85% is an improvement over a prior school year. I think at this juncture, we just saw that recently. To Ms. Thrower's point, I do like the concept of including a line item. I think it actually does need to be separate, Ms. Thrower, if you'll indulge me a moment, that arriving to school on time is certainly one metric. And then arriving home on time, what that looks like, if that's within an hour or within, I think we, probably a separate, yeah. And so talking to the team and you all come up with what that metric needs to look like, I think that goes to the further safe and positive environment for the student that, and also from a fiscal responsibility standpoint, the longer that bus is on the road, the more gas that's taking and all, you know, I think it speaks to all of that. So it touches on several different things, but I think if we actually did create a separate line item specific on how long it takes from the end of the school day to that student actually arriving home, that would be a metric I don't think we're currently at least monitoring via the strategic plan.
I'm just going back to that baseline, because we're looking at scores from last, like, when we look at
Oh, good point.
We're looking at last year, but now we're looking at this nine weeks, which is 85%. But when I think of last year, I'm curious what that is for the baseline. I feel like, again, I mean, I don't know, it has to make sense to me. So I see something from last year, and now I'm like, oh, nine weeks, 85%. Things are great. If you would have asked me last year as baseline, I'd been like, oh, you know, looking to see that. So
What was the metric, do you know, for last year?
So we weren't tracking this last year. A lot of that has to do with the sophistication of our system to be able to track this. And as we've been upgrading our system, it's become more sophisticated for us to be able to track. So there's several items in here that we don't have baseline data for, and when we get it, it'll be later. For instance, we'll get there in just a moment, but tracking our work orders, the For instance, we'll get there in just a moment, but tracking our work orders, the previous work order system could not track that time to completion, so we've now upgraded to a new system, and we'll have a new baseline result once we get that new system underway.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I agree with, with the comments that have been made, especially this, this return thing. We live in Florida, in the afternoon, this is, this is what I get. If, if weather's bad, if it's raining, if it's problematic, we've got people sitting, we've got parents leaving work, coming, sitting, waiting, you know, for this bus that doesn't arrive, you know, long periods of time. And so, the idea of 85%, we do need outrage, we, we just need, we need it to, to represent our, our children that we're responsible for properly. We ask for proper behavior out of the students on the bus. We need to get the bus there, no excuses. We just need to make this thing work correctly. That may sound like if you're in the trenches, impossible, then we need to revise what's going on in the trenches. I don't know, and that isn't hostility to any individual. It has to do with just doing the job right, because we're gonna have school choice, and we've got to have the correct program working, and yes, I do have, I do have, and I, when we have a failing school, it was brought up that I've got, this is down in my area, and I've, I've talked with the principal, and we, we're working on these things, we're nailing them, but we call it failure. We don't, what, what, what's the term you used, reversing, coming back around or something?
Transformation.
Transformation. Transf, you know, whenever I got an F, it was failing.
We don't have any F schools, so let's stress that.
Okay.
So, moving on from that topic frankly, and I, I appreciate it, Mr. Browning, I appreciate the continued dialogue. I, I understand.
Well, it's important.
Where we are, I do, I completely understand where we are with ensuring that our buses are arriving on time. I appreciate the metric, and where we're going to, where we are striving to. We certainly want to reach this 100% metric as soon as possible. We also understand there are extenuating circumstances, and just as Mr. Whitehouse expressed, perhaps even the time that they are being logged as being late for school is still 15 minutes ahead of the bell. So, we, we understand, but all of that is taken into consideration, and those factors can be adjusted if they need to be. At this point, I, I wouldn't recommend that, but we have a team that's dedicated to ensuring that we are working towards that metric. Just ensuring that the, the goal line actually is different than what we initially had said it to be is a step in the right direction. So, I, I'm grateful for that, I'm thankful for the work that's being done there, and I think we can move on to the community engagement communications. Thank you, Mr. Whitehouse.
Yes ma'am. So, the first original outcome metric for that goal, establish a measure of community satisfaction when district communication, again, that's more of a strategy, it was a completion, it's done, there's nothing for us to measure with that going forward, so we have shifted that to a strategy. The same with establish a district-wide staff survey that captures satisfaction rates across all five goal areas, also a strategy, it's, it's done, we have completed that survey, but nothing to measure. So, we still have the outcome metric of increasing the percent of families indicating satisfaction with the communication, which will come from that survey. We have added in a few additional ones, based on some of the work that we've been doing. So, one, we'd like to add in, increase the number of families participating in the parent partnership events. Again, that goes back to the overall objective of that goal, of increasing the dialogue, partnerships, and collaborations with our families and communities. The second one is to increase the number of families participating in Engage MCPS, again, along the same lines. And then the final one, looking at the business world for partnerships, increasing the number of established business partnerships that we have from Marion County Public Schools. Again, all of those, I think, will help us to address those objectives that we had in place for Goal Five.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehouse. I know that Dr. Gullett, she may want to comment on this, or, or I, I can. She and I had a conversation about this just this week. Board, if you're comfortable with it, I actually would like to see the word business partnerships changed to community partnerships. While we certainly understand that our business community is significantly a part of what we're trying to do, I think that we have individuals that also are a part of the community that may be supporting us in unique ways. We may have religious organizations and so forth, civic groups, Ms. Reverend Cummings' fraternity is one, that isn't a business, but certainly is a community partner to some of our schools, as we just witnessed with the Fordham Early Learning Academy. So, if you're comfortable with that, I think shifting that word from business to community, I think that will further enhance what we're actually trying to accomplish with that. Do you all agree with that?
I, yeah, I, I, I agree with the idea, like Kiwanis Club and what have you. I mean, that's where so much is done.
Right.
Because it does pull the entire community into play, and individuals then contact Superintendent or the board, individuals, it's not businesses, don't call me, it's individuals who put our, put their, their children, their most, you know, the most valuable part of their family in our trust, that's who's talking to us, not, not businesses. Businesses want to throw some money in, you do get an advertisement, I get that. You get your name out there in front of the school, I get that. That's all a positive kind of a thing, and it's a great, great way to bring in revenue and gain participation, because that's the way businesses think. But individuals to, to that idea of civic clubs and all, that is, yeah, that's a key. Let me ask you, why, I, I'm having trouble jumping between the green and the yellow here. Is yours all the same, or how, how do you go back and forth?
Sir, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Whitehouse, I'll explain. This is the, this is the current strategic plan as written. This is the area of community engagement and communications, and this is the, these are the proposed changes. And so, Mr. Whitehouse is saying, this is what it currently says, we've completed that, this is what it currently says, we've completed that, so we'd like to remove those items, and we would instead like to add these. And so, that's what each one of these.
Why you skipped from one to the other? Okay, then.
And that's the way we've done each one of the sections.
On this idea of completion, if you run a survey, if Ford Motor Company runs a survey, and I'm sorry I pick on Ford a lot, but I just, Ford's a, a company that started a long time ago, and, and it's still with us. So, if you pick, if Ford Motor Company picks a survey of how their pickups are doing, okay, I get that, but there has to be a way, you know, it's gonna be in favor, Ford's gonna get that. They're, they're not gonna publish it unless it's, or, and they have, they have probably put the words out, asked the questions that can get them certain answers. I mean, it's a, it's a trust buildup thing, and this isn't criticism, this is, I'm just saying, here, how do we, how do we get authentic trust out of the community? I would like to see complaints that come in, real complaints to the superintendent, real complaints to the, to yourself, real complaints to the board members, a, a way to harness that, because I'm nowhere near that close. If you took a valid sample of 1,000 or 100 that would have a margin of error of, say, well beyond the 6,004 for statistics, that it might be 15, 20, 30, 40%, because it's so anecdotal. I, I think we need, and I've thought for some time, and I've brought it up occasionally, I think we need a better way to gather data on these things that is not, does not appear to be orchestrated by us. That's a true statistically valid sample, and the complaints that come in, or the praises that come in, Superintendent, that I think would be, would really help us. It would help us get to the bottom of some of these things that I'm sort of bringing up, because I think we all feel it. It, it isn't that great, and it isn't completed, truly, it's, that's what the grand jury called branding. It's, it's, we don't want.
Mr. Browning.
No, no.
Okay, so I'm just gonna stop right there. So, at, at this point, what I want to.
It's a positive outlook.
Okay, what, what I want to say is, as a member of the community engagement and communications team, I want to say that in, in error on my part, as, as a member of that team, that in the current, achieved 2026 plan, we created output objectives instead of outcome and objectives. And so, a, a survey is an output objective, and frankly, the district didn't have that output objective, never had created a survey as to what we were actually seeking to do. And so, the fact that those output objectives were met, I'm grateful that that has occurred. However, to actually measure what those surveys needed to tell us is then where we're going. To Mr. Browning's point, though, I, I do think that perhaps the team can analyze and come back with some ideas that in addition to perhaps parent partnership and Engage MCPS, and those certainly are things from a community engagement standpoint that we want to increase, as well as the satisfaction listed on a survey, from those who are willing to complete the survey, are there additional metrics that we may be able to look at? Whether it's an email, or a phone call, or a receptionist taking a ticker and a principal, you know, and I don't know the answer to that. I know that I've, I've worked with many different kinds of metrics, but I think that it would benefit us if we looked at potential additional outcome metrics that we might want to gauge community engagement, specifically communication. While Mr. Browning did express that if you're comparing your positives versus your negatives, frankly, that's never gonna be a way to generalize anything, because I, I can't quote the specific quote, but I think if you have a negative experience, you're gonna go and tell seven people. If you have a positive experience, you may barely tell one, and, and so, you can't ever gauge positive versus negative in that way. But there may be an, an additional metric or two that we might be able to, to look at that enhances that communication. I know just in the last year, we've been receiving additional newsletters, there's new video updates, there's all kinds of communication from an internal communication. So, maybe also a metric that we're not including is an internal communication metric, the number of times that our employees are reached through a human resources newsletter, or through the videos that Dr. Gullett does, or something. Maybe there's an internal communication metric in addition to an external metric. So, I, to Mr. Browning's point, I, I do think there might be additional things that we could add there. I'm grateful that we are adding these three, but while we're sending this back to the team to look at a couple of other things, I mean, this isn't like next month, you have to come, but I, I welcome that additional thought of how we, a plan is only as good as we continue to tweak it, and, and we want to actually be measuring what we want to find and what we want to succeed in, and I think all of those communication efforts also enhance the safe and positive working environment for our employees that we're also now creating a specific metric. So, thank you for those points, Mr. Browning. Are there any additional comments on all of this that Mr. Whitehouse has shared with us today?
I have one thing, and it's, that's okay.
Yeah.
And it's the, where we were talking about increasing the number of established business partnerships for Marion County Public Schools, that has very specific criteria, that is a segment of the community that is easily measured. And, and my question, I have a couple of questions. The first one is that are we really at 49 out of 75? And, and what is the, the 75? Because I didn't realize we had 75 schools. When I think of business partnerships, I think of business partnerships with our schools. So, I'm a little confused about.
I think that, and this is, I'm not certain, Mr. Whitehouse, if you have a, a better answer. I think the 75 is that we would actually have more than one per school, or, or more than one partner. I, I see heads nodding in the, right, and some have that already, but for those perhaps that only have one, that we would increase that, you know, 25% or some would have at least two.
Okay, because I also thought that every school had at least one business partner. Is that accurate?
Yes, it is.
Yes. Okay, so, wouldn't then the baseline be the number of schools that we have? Because we have more than 49 schools.
But I believe, we don't have anything for Fordham just yet, I could be wrong, but.
We do now, yes.
You have one now.
So, we need to change our baseline.
We'll get that updated then.
Right. So, the baseline just needs to be adjusted.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that. And, and I believe in keeping that as a separate metric, because that, those are our school business partners. However, the, the civic groups and all of that, maybe they could be their own category, you know, keep the business partners and then add a category for civic involvement, church involvement. Okay, I see Lauren nodding, so we'll put them on the right track.
Thank you. If I may, I think that would help solve the next item, because if you see in the key performance indicators is the Public Education Foundation, which does a fantastic job of supporting our business partners for our schools, so it'd be easier to track, measure all the partnerships we're trying to create in addition to that for the district and on behalf of all schools, and so, I think that, that would be a great solution to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, right, okay. So, thank you, Mr. Whitehouse. Does that conclude your presentation?
So, the last piece is actually looking at our key performance indicators, which we've kind of glossed over, but want to make sure we did address that. So, the idea of the key performance indicators is looking at the actual record, data, report, artifact, whatever it may be, where these numbers come from, so that we're very transparent to the community of where these numbers exist, that it's not just numbers we're throwing out, we're not making up the numbers, that we can point to a specific report where that exists. And so, we went through each one of these to list out exactly what that report would be called, where we would find that information, and also making sure that we captured the data elements that are involved in that, so we know specifically when the report is run, who runs the report, what is captured within that report in our data records, so that at any time in the next five years, if there's anybody changing positions, we certainly know exactly where that comes from, regardless who's in those seats. And so, we've worked to capture that. So, each of these here, with the exception of the ones that are still to be determined, are the data elements where we pulled these reports from.
Thank you, Mr. Whitehouse, Mr. Browning.
Yes, thank you. There was a little tone in your voice there.
Yes, sir. We're ready for our break. It's been two and a half hours, we're ready.
Right, well, well, nothing is as important as, as what we're doing right here, right now.
Don't disagree.
So, I would say to you that I would like to see target expanded, and what you just said really needs to be etched in stone. It needs to be, to add credibility to what's being said, not just say it because we've got the microphone, but there are huge problems, and we're going in, and there was a reaction when I said branding. Branding is what any organization does to make themselves look as good as they possibly can be. That's why we have public relations, that's, they, they get the, they, they don't send out a negative message. However, when we're setting a plan forward for five years, this baseline, nobody needs to defend the baseline. It needs, if it, if it's a source of absolute outrage, if it is, it needs to be addressed as such. And that needs to be the biggest part of this whole program here, like scoot it over, and these targets, and what was asked up here, there was several times, like, wait a minute, what is that metric? What is that? How did you get to that? What is exactly what's going on? That's what is asked by the public who sends us our 44,000 or 43, or whatever it is, number of students. That is, we, we've got to be clear, and we've got to be authentic, and we've got to be vulnerable, so that when our metrics are challenged, we are outraged about the baseline, and we are absolutely doing everything we can, if it's an emergency situation, to get it up to an acceptable level where we're not outraged, and then we have a target. But I can't take outrage not being expressed to a target that hasn't been achieved for many, many years. So, that, that's the part, building credibility, this board needs to, that's how you brand, is wow, what a great product, wow, what a, what great metrics, wow, what great leadership, wow, what great professional management. That's the key for me. That's where I go. Anytime I consult on something that needs to stay at a high level of performance, at the highest possible level, and not accept, ever accept, some of these targets that are outrageous. So, we need an outrageous zone, maybe, like wow, what is the level of outrage that we have to even bring this forward as a baseline? How did we get there? Wow, we're playing a hockey game and falling through the ice, it's been three warm days. We used to have to have three days below freezing before we were allowed on a pond for hockey, and I think we're going out and say, well, I don't know, we lost a lot of kids, they're falling through the ice, because we've had several days up in the 40s. So, we, we gotta be outraged if it's an outrageous baseline. So we gotta be outraged if it's an outrageous baseline. Thank you. That's my feedback to you.
Thank you. While outrage is important, it's also not measurable. And so, I'm grateful that we've been able to put metrics in place, that we not only have a metric, we have a baseline, we have a target, and we have a KPI on how we're going to judge that metric. So, is there any public comment on this topic? While I've been receiving public comment via email, as we know, public comment needs to happen in person. So, I don't see anyone from the public here. It is 11:30, board. Let's take a 15-minute break, please. We've been going for two and a half hours. So 15 minutes, we're going to recess.
We are coming out of recess and our next agenda item, I believe, is with Ms. Bidik. We're going to be talking about Canvas, the Canvas Learning Management System platform. Hi, Ms. Bidik.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman Cummings, Vice Chairman Campbell, Board Members, Superintendent Gullett, Attorney Powers, and Ms. Martinez Lopez. Thank you for having me here this morning. And I'm here to talk to you a little bit about our current learning management system and looking at transferring to a different platform that we're going to be using. And to give you a little bit of background on this, we are currently, for professional learning, using two entirely separate platforms that are called learning management systems. And you would hope that these two systems would speak to each other and work together well. Unfortunately, that's not what we're seeing as we're working on a daily basis to do our job to continue the professional learning of all of our staff here in Marion County, which I know is a strong piece of our strategic plan, is continuing to retain and build and support our staff as they continue to grow to increase the student achievement in students that we've been talking about today. So we're currently running off of two separate platforms. So we have been investigating this year ways that we can enhance the current platform we're looking at and possibly working off of one platform instead of two, to ensure that not only for the participants, but also on the back end of creating and building and reporting to the state, that we are working as efficiently as possible and making sure that everything is running smoothly. So as you can see on the slides, I thought it was important that we shared kind of the why. Why are we looking at a new platform in general? So our first priority is always to look at the front side and to look at the experience of the user. And in this case, it's our teachers, it's our paraprofessionals, it's anyone here in Marion County that would have to take any type of training. And at times, it's even you, the board members, that participate in some of these activities with us here in Marion County. So the first thing we're looking at is that currently, the ease of use is not, it's not easy for our employees. It's cumbersome, it's a platform that is over a decade old. We brought this in about a decade ago. So as you know, things have changed, expectations with the state, expectations with reporting to the state, with what's expected of teachers to be doing, it's all changed in that decade. So we're still working off of that same system. So that's one of the issues that we kind of work with each day, is to try to kind of upgrade that system as we integrate all of the new pieces. And as we've brought in Canvas, that's the second platform that we have. So of course, we've got two separate platforms, and they're not talking as well to each other. So I feel like some days, we're running from one end of the district to the other, just to get these two things to work together to support the bigger picture. So ease of use right now, to streamline our ease of use for our employees. The second is a single sign-on, a single platform. That's been a big thing that we've been looking at here in Marion County, is trying to get more of that one-stop place for people to go, so they know exactly where to go, their easy sign-in, things like that. And just the visibility of the professional learning, and the more that we can put out there in front of people, the more likely they are to participate and take part in that learning process. Compensation, I know, has been a big issue along the years with both the teachers and on our end of the logistics piece. Working with the compensation has taken quite an extensive period of time, because compensation is literally done by hand. All of the account strings for every single individual learner, for every single individual professional learning they do, is done by hand by one person. And that one person then sends it to multiple departments, and it comes back and forth. And so we're looking at being more efficient and more effective, and more responsive is our biggest key there. More responsive to our individuals when they participate, they want to make sure they're compensated. Reliability. Our reliability is currently not...
Could I, Kevin, could you increase? She's got her microphone right there, she's right into it, but I'm just not hearing...
I'm sorry, I can lean in.
...the tail end of those, and I, like the end of the sentence, that type of thing, it's getting truncated.
I can lean in. Yes, I will lean in, I apologize. So I was speaking about compensation, did you hear that okay, or would you like me to repeat some of that?
I did, but I did, please start again on the compensation, because it did drift off there.
Thank you. So compensation has been a concern in Marion County, as we work to compensate our employees for the work that they have done in their professional learning. It has unfortunately taken quite a significant amount of time to get our employees from the participation in the professional learning to the compensation piece. A lot of that is because it is done by hand. It is us going through the Skyward Business, all of the different pieces that we have here in Marion County. But what we don't see right now is an efficient system to take it from one place to another through the technology that's available. So what we're stopping to do is we're pulling off of every single employee by hand, and I have one person typing in the account string by hand to pay each employee for this. And then it goes through multiple departments. And it can only be one person at a time that does it, based on how our current system works. So I know that for that alone, the compensation piece is a big issue that we have. And again, we want to celebrate the professional learning that our employees are doing, but it does come with the responsibility of compensating them for that. And we want to be as efficient and effective with doing that as possible. The next one I was speaking to is reliability. At this time, the current system we're using, again, is a decade old, so our reliability is not there. On any given day, the system is crashing on us and is down, especially when we go to put out our professional learning catalogs at the beginning of semesters, or at the beginning of the summer, when we're looking to put that big push for professional learning out there. The reliability is not there, and our system crashes quite often. A second piece of the reliability that's not out there is when we go in to close out the different programs and the different professional learning. It's quite an extensive task, and it will time you out without notice, or it will close you down without notice. And the problem is, is it doesn't save your work as you're going. So you might have just spent two hours working on something, and then all of a sudden, it shuts down on you. So you start over with all two hours. Again, when we're looking at fiscal responsibility, when we're looking at all of the different pieces that we try to be very conscious and mindful of, it's not supporting our needs at this time. And again, on the front end for our users, which is our teachers, we want to make this user-friendly, and we want to be responsive. So that's looking at the first piece. Again, also the search engine. Right now, we put out a whole separate professional learning catalog to our staff to help them find what they need, because there's really not a search engine for them within the current system.
May I, may I ask?
Sure.
Yes. Drill down on the way the contracts are done. During a year, we have contracts that come. They're typically 100,000, 200,000. They're out of Des Moines, Iowa, or LA, California. They're from somebody, and I'm often troubled, and other board members are too, with, these repetitively come up. And you're, I think I hear you saying that we're not getting our full money's worth out of these, and that we can do better by going to something that actually works. 10 years old in an electronic world, I think I hear you saying that, is insane. It doesn't work. It's like a 10-year-old car, you know, might get you there, might not. Is that right? Is that where you're, is that where you're coming from?
Actually, on slide two of 14, yes, I'm sure that's...
That's where I'm going. It is not responsive to our needs at this point.
Yeah, and we're spending a fortune.
So we do, we do, we purchased it initially, and each year, we spend a significant amount of money to re-subscribe to our current system. So as we move forward, we would be having an initial outlay to move to the new system, and then a much lower subscription cost. And that's going to be on the next slide. So as we move to the next slide, so as I shared, the first thing we look at is what is the interface for our user, our participants. The second piece we look at on the next slide is we're looking at the ease of the logistical support for the professional learning that's happening. And a lot of that happens on the end of my team. But it could be a principal who's providing professional learning, a coach who's providing professional learning, another director that's providing the learning. So it's not just my team. But this really, this page looks at the logistical aspect of pushing out the learning and keeping the documentation needed for the state, keeping the documentation needed for recertification points, all of that. So looking at that, again, we look at the ease of use. The current system is very cumbersome. It takes quite an extensive amount of time from my team members away from doing professional learning, because they're in the back end managing the professional learning. So looking at it, again, being streamlined, where we're not working off of two entirely separate platforms, and kind of like I said, we're running from one end of the district to the other, to try to get them to work together. The next thing is the streamline of the compensation process. So we're looking at trying to do something as simple as, I guess, an easy way to say it that we all can think of, is when you are going to purchase something, and you go to put your credit card information, they have this place for this, part of the credit card, and this pays for the date, and this place for that. Well, we can build that right into our logistics system, the current platform that we're looking at, where we put in, it's coming out of S.R. funds, or it's coming out of Title I funds. And then we can build in where it pulls from Skyward Business, that this is the teacher's school number, and this is the teacher's employee number, which all become part of that bigger account string. So we can build that in on the front end. So on the back end, we hit a button, and it prints out all of the pieces that we need for payroll, instead of one person sitting and doing it by hand for thousands of employees. Streamline of the approval process. So as you may know from former meetings, we have to approve a professional learning catalog that is sent to the state. The state has very specific professional learning criteria that we must adhere to and align our district-wide professional learning to. And so each piece that we build, and each professional learning that we build for this district, has to align to the state. So there's quite a cumbersome process of us doing that, and ensuring that when a school comes in and puts theirs forth, we have to go back and check to make sure that they are meeting the state expectations, or they have documented that they're meeting them correctly. So it's very cumbersome on our end for the approval process. And so we're looking at trying to streamline that a bit, because the more we can do that, the more we can put our team out into the schools and into the professional learning realm to continue to support our staff.
What is the name of the one that we want to get rid of, and what is the name of the, what you want to get to?
We're currently using True North Logic system.
Say it again?
True North Logic.
T N L.
T N L is what you might hear of it.
Words, true...
North Logic.
Logic.
And since we've...
That's bye-bye for True North Logic. I mean, from what I'm hearing, it just sounds to me, I just want you to say it clearly, that all of these problems that you're identifying are associated with True North Logic.
The current situation we have with our reliability, yes, is the program we're using.
Okay, good. Is there anything holding you up?
Um...
In, in, making it efficient?
This dialogue.
This dialogue, getting approval from this board, and...
You're asking permission? Is that, I mean, is that what we're doing here? Because, I mean, wow, if it's that bad, what, why don't we just fix it?
I am sharing the why with you, why we need to move forth with something new. So that's what I'm sharing.
It's not cheap.
It's not. So that's probably why I'm building the why. You know, anything new and anything good is, it does have an expense with the initial capital layout. So that's what, I'm building the why. So just to go a little faster, since you seem to know the why, looking at the approval process, again, the reliability issue. And there is an annual cost savings once we do the initial layout, and it's quite significant. Our renewal process would be much lower in cost than it currently is. And then just an enhancement of the services support. Currently, our services support comes from that company, and it's not as responsive as we would like, and it's not as responsive as we need. When we're trying to get something done, we need it done now, not a few days from now. So the current, the system we're looking to go to is a 24/7 support system that we have actually used before, and we know that they are fairly responsive in that 24/7 time.
Is Canvas the new one, where you want to go?
Canvas is the new one.
Okay.
So what we're looking at with this new platform, again, I shared, we have, we're on different sides of the district, and we're running back and forth. We currently, one of those two places is Canvas that we're currently working off of. And Canvas works with both of our teachers' learning and our students' learning. But they don't talk to each other well, so it doesn't talk to our old system well. So Canvas does have a platform within its learning management system that does do the same functionality for us. And so we would have to build it, and they've done this with many districts, or many districts in Florida that currently use this and are using it well. We've talked to those districts. So what it would do, it would bring us right together with these two things. So if you imagine, we've got our current Canvas, we're looking at what's called the Canvas Catalog, which would be the interface that our teachers use. And then in between, we build a little baby bridge, which is, which is what I call the guts, or the logistics of it. It's kind of all that background work of providing the points, doing the account strings and the money thread, keeping the recertification. So what we're looking is going from here to bringing them right together into one. So looking at this again, 27, 24/7 tiered support. It does integrate nicely with Skyward Business and can pull our information right from Skyward Business, which is important. It will interface with the catalog, and I'll show you some pictures as we move forward with that. It has a much stronger search feature that will allow our teachers, if they need extra points for students with disability, which is a requirement of the state, that you have certain types of points, they can go right in and search for those things. If they are looking for something in the area of behavior support or support with ESE needs, they can go right in and search that at a much easier rate than what we currently have.
What does the old one cost, just in rough numbers, and what's the new one cost? I mean, just give me an idea, because if we're tolerating this kind of inefficiency, Lord have mercy.
The old one, when we purchased it a while back, like I said, there was an outlay a while back. But we do currently spend about $90,000 a year to continue to use this.
Nine zero, ninety?
Nine zero, $90,000 a year.
Okay, and the new one?
The new one would be about $25,000 to use it new. However, there is the capital outlay at the beginning, which is, can, you know, run, depending on what we're looking at, you know, in that eight, $900,000 range.
About a million dollars?
Yes.
Oh.
That's why we're having a work session, Mr....
That's why we're discussing this, yes.
Right, I get it. I mean, that's, that's it, but I'm kind of stunned.
That's a large amount of money.
Kind of stunned, because I think when you look at our payroll, payroll, and you look at our billion dollars, a million dollars is 1%. It's like, it's not even, it's not an acceptable tip, for example. So...
That makes me happy that you see it that way, yes.
Well, I mean, it is, because, because the cost of 7,000 or 6,000 employees, and what you're describing is horrendous. I mean, we're not getting mileage out of, and I have, I've sat here and discussed many, many things, many, many of these things that would operate on this system, professional learning programs that are well over a million dollars. So whoa, if we can't, we can't actually get to them and use them and practically, you know, like that, and really get, you know, get traction, wow. I'm, I'm, I'm saying, wow, we should have started this last week. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm being a little facetious, but this is a big deal.
It is a very...
A huge deal. Oh, oh, and, and, please, this is so important that you're doing this, and the superintendent's bringing this forward, because... this, and the superintendent's bringing this forward, because you need to know why you're inefficient. It's not the people. If the systems are bad, you need to get better systems. If we're losing aircraft because the systems are bad, are you kidding me?
Well, and I think you, from year to year, not only is there the ninety thousand that we spend for the subscription, but the amount of time that the employees spend doing this inefficiently. An example is, I, I one day did one of the pieces myself, because I wanted to know exactly what I was, when I speak to this, what I was talking about. And to close out one of the mandatory classes, it was done through Canvas, but I had to then stop and drive across the district to our other platform and do it. It took me over twelve hours to close out one. And right now, I have eighteen mandatory courses open. So when it took me personally over twelve hours to just close out one, and that's not paying, that's just closing it out. So again, that's just when we talk about the amount of money that's going out with inefficiency, and then just frustration of employees with, like I said, the ease of use. Our employees are frustrated, and they call us frustrated, and we try to problem solve as quickly as we can. And I have an amazing team that does a great job problem solving. But I'd like just to not to have to problem solve all day long, and just to have something that supports us.
There is no upside, no upside at all, to inefficiency. None, unless maybe you didn't want to do the job, you know, for example. It's the only, the only, in any corporation, any organization, there is no upside to inefficiency unless you just are just kind of on vacation. So, wow.
Well, that's what we're here to fix.
Yeah, you're, you're on target for this board member. I don't know, the rest can speak for themselves. But I, I am elated to hear you saying, we're going efficient, and outlining all those inefficiencies we can say goodbye to, put a balloon on them, send them on out the back door, and just goodbye, sayonara, adios. Wow. I'm excited.
Okay. Well, I, I will go through quickly. If, and if you have questions, please slow me down, because, you know, if, I'm seeing heads nodding, so I feel like we're in a good place. But I definitely want to make sure that we give you all the information. So moving forward from this slide to the next slide, it really just shows what the new system, Canvas, that like I shared, we're looking at moving towards. And we have already brought in Canvas for our student learning management system. So now we would just be expanding it to our professional learning management system with our employees. This slide really shows, I don't know, sorry, this slide shows that it, the orange area is the professional learning management system. This shows everything Canvas can do. We currently own that top piece, which at the twelve o'clock area, we own that learning management system. And so now we're adding on the professional management system piece. And that platform comes in two pieces. The first piece is actually the logistical side of it, the platform. And the second piece is the interface that we can purchase that is called Canvas Catalog. And on the next slide, it just shows you what, this is now what a user would see when they go to the platform of Canvas Catalog. And as you can see, it's a lot more visually appealing, it's a lot more user-friendly, and it's an easier search for our employees. When they see something that they, they're interested in, they, oh, the next slide can show you different ways that it can look. So it could look like this, or it could look like this. And we work with the company to decide what that looks like for our employees to best meet the needs of Marion County Public Schools. And then as we go forward, they click on it, and it gives them all the information they need. It will tell them the dates, the times, the facilitators, the locations, how many points they would be receiving, whether they would be receiving compensation. So again, all of that information is right here in a one-stop shop. Just giving you a moment to look at some of these. In addition to the district using this, the schools, again, would be using this. The departments would be using this to create the professional learning that are happening on their own sites or in their own departments. And again, the ease of use for them is very efficient and effective, and will streamline the process significantly. So this just shows a little bit of a glimpse of what that could look like from the school or the site level. So making this easy and an easy user, once you go into the Canvas Catalog and you click on the desired professional learning you're looking for, you simply click on it and click on enroll, and then it takes you right to the current Canvas that they are familiar with. And this is the dashboard and the page that they would see currently when we're using Canvas. So it just takes them directly from one place to another, and just kind of avoids all of that other situation with having to go to an entirely separate learning management system.
Does the course, the course content come with the million dollars? Is that what it is, or is this, do we still have to keep all these different?
The course content does not come. There are companies, and I believe Canvas is one of them, where you can buy course content. However, when we look at Marion County, we want to do what's best for Marion County. We know the needs of our district. And so most of the courses come directly from the people supporting the learners at that moment. And if we use outside vendors at all, it's usually more of a face-to-face model than it is a virtual model. But there are, there are access pieces that we could purchase along the way as an add-on to this. But that's not what we're looking at in this purchase.
Can we create, and, like, I believe that the district would benefit by the intellectual assets we have here, like you might write a program that could be immensely beneficial, let's say. Does this accommodate our creating content?
It absolutely does. And we are currently creating content through Canvas. It's just not speaking to the other system that we're currently using very well for signup, for payment, for recertification points. They're just not speaking well correctly, as well as we'd like them to. Another large piece to this is, this will allow principals, we can give principals the access for them to see what their employees are doing, because there are times, especially when we're talking about the mandatory courses, where they have to be monitoring the compliance of their employees, that they have done these things. And traditionally, with our current system, it has to be done at a district level. So my department is trying to pull seven thousand employees who has and has not done that, and send that out consistently to the, to the principals or the site leaders. So at this time, we've moved to Canvas to do that training, so that we are not doing that. And we're including principals as one of the facilitators, so that they can go in and see their own employees and where they are with that, and where they are with the completion of the different mandatory trainings. So we're starting to move in that direction. However, currently, when that closes, so we just had Alice Protocols. So when Alice Protocols closes, we now, with the old system, have to go in and pull all of the input of who has and has not finished, and walk it over to T N L, and then hand input that in T N L. Because we tried last year to have them talk to each other and do it, and that's what I was saying, it took me twelve hours to, to do that by hand, because it wasn't doing that. We had hoped it would, but it didn't. And that's when we really highlighted the fact that we need something different. So we've been, we've spent, pretty much, I would say, since last November, I've spent working on this, looking at other programs, not just Canvas, but looking at other consumers and, that have used programs like this, and also looking at the different companies that provide learning management systems such as this. And as I shared, eight different school districts right around us are using Canvas, because when it comes down to the research, we found that that is what meets our needs the best, as well as the needs of people around us. So I think we've, we've chosen well.
Wow, this is very exciting. Let me just say that I, Superintendent, I really am impressed that this is being brought forward. I remember back in the day, it used to be, this would be a closed-door meeting, where, where you'd have an introduction of something like this. This is so incredible that you're bringing this forward in the public venue, where the press and the, and the people that are our bosses, and the legislature, and everybody can see what we're doing. And, and they can get the reactions, because I know I have a reaction to it. And I want to drill down on the dollars, but if we can, if we can help teachers maybe double their income because of authoring, and, and, and when you publish, and you're in academia, and you publish, it's a home run. And this kind of, it looks to me like we could really excel, both the employees' maturation into a higher level of polish, as, it's just sophistication, academic sophistication, and, and education, professional enhancement, but it finally goes to the student. And we get, we get something for our money. So, wow, I'm very impressed, I'm very impressed. So if you would, I'll be off the board in a, in a month or two months, whatever it is, but please keep this effort going for my part. And if we need to, I'll vote twice for this.
[laughing]
I love it. I love what you're doing, because it's efficiency. Let's, let's really dig in, and you got, you got, you got serious support on this.
Ms. King, Ms. Thor, do you have additional questions or comments for Ms. Biddick?
Yes, thank you for this great presentation. What's the funding source?
Currently, right now, we're looking at using Esser Funds to do this. That's what has been allocated towards us. And normally, for the annual subscription, we use either our Title II funds or our district funds that are allocated to our department.
Thank you. And I expected that to be the funding source, and it makes me very appreciative of, of having it, because this is an age-old problem. In fact, it has caused employees to be unwilling to participate in professional development because of the amount of time that it takes from the time they take the course to the time they get compensated for it, like, months. And in terms of extreme inefficiency, that pretty much describes it. Yet, because of our funding constraints, traditionally, and, and of course, it's the right thing to do, to direct our resources, including technology, directly to student needs. But at some point, you have to take care of the people that are taking care of the kids. And it didn't ever seem like there was enough money to do that, nor an appetite, because there was a perception in the, the community that we were already spending too much, you know, on our employees and, and things like that. I think that that's starting to shift. I think that people really are starting to see what heroes our teachers and, and staff really are that do this work in public education. And I am glad and very grateful for this targeted opportunity financially, to finally come out of the dark ages when it comes to professional development. And having been a professional development trainer myself, and designing trainings for, for other teachers and parent professionals and so on, there's nothing more fun than, than delivering that opportunity to your own colleagues, and then seeing them months later, or even years later, seeing, I remember a point from that, and, and I've used that, and it's, and it's been great, you know, in, in terms of helping me in the classroom, or moving students forward, whatever it is. So, things like this will hopefully continue to encourage the talent that we have within to be willing to participate more deeply in our structured professional development as well. So, so this, this covers all of the bases that, that we've needed for so long. And I couldn't be happier. Thank you so much.
It's, it's a team effort, and I do want, Mr. Carrillo is here with me. His team has been instrumental.
Effective, thank you.
Yes, instrumental. And I know that, you know, we have a lot of support in the district to, to make sure professional learning is a key area of focus. A wise person said, you grow your teachers, you grow your students. And so we need to ensure that we are continuing to grow and honor and value our teachers, and all of the employees that work with our students here in Marion County.
Ms. King?
Yes, thank you for the great presentation. I kind of look at it as like getting the pebble out of the shoe. You know how there's just like a constant irritation? And that's what it was. It was just an irritation, and then there would be rumors, and there, there would be blame placed, even the board or the CFO, we don't have money. It was just, and it was all false. But, so I'm really pleased and.
Someone was being lazy.
Or, yeah, or people are lazy, or we don't have, there was just a lot of different rumors, you know. But I guess just people didn't exactly know or understand, so they, you know, would come up with their own interpretation of whatever they thought it may be. So I'm glad that we will be removing that, and that we're better functioning, right? And like as you said, you know, grow your teachers, you grow our students. And it's just one of those simple things, just to get out of the teacher's way, you know, to be better. Thank you.
Mr. Browning, again?
Thank you. Okay, is there a place in this? Now, our, our teachers, you can get paid for, for doing your, you know, doing your job. Education is something I always pay for myself. And, and I don't want it to fall on the teachers, like they're, they won't really learn their material unless they get paid. Like self-improvement, professional improvement is incumbent on the individual, really to step ahead. Do we have a major section of this? We don't want to portray teachers as ignorance-bound unless they get paid to get educated. In other words, I, I think everybody who went to college, maybe, maybe today that is a little different with this student loan thing, but everybody paid for their education. And, and you typically do that. Is there a chance, if you want to learn, you want to cross-train, you want to move into another area, can you just do it without being paid? I mean, there, you can access this, right? This is like, this is like reading a book. You don't get paid to read the book, you read the book.
You can. And again, as we continue to grow and develop, Canvas is fairly new here, as we continue to grow and develop, you can continue to create courses that are out there for the ease of the employee. I'll give you a perfect example of one that I am currently working with my team to create right now. We put out the instructional framework last year, and we want to put out the resources that support the instructional framework. So I have created, I'm sorry, I'm leaning on this, I have created an instructional framework Canvas course, where they can go in, and each module is a piece of the instructional framework. And it will take them to articles, it will take them to videos, it'll provide them resources. So if they say, gosh, I really want to grow in the area of engagement, they simply go to this, they go to the engagement section, and we will have a plethora of resources there for them. It could be videos of Marion County teachers doing it, it could be videos of people on the other side of the United States, or something that we've pulled from some wonderful resources in professional learning, any of those things. So as we continue with the Canvas model, we are able to create all sorts of professional learning opportunities. And not all of the professional learning we provide here in Marion County is paid. There are a lot of teachers who participate in things because they just want that professional growth, especially when we're looking at our pipeline and people wanting to grow in their careers and their knowledge. A lot of times, they do that, and they are not compensated for that, because that is something that they intrinsically feel is of value to them.
Yes, and please accent that, because that's self-actualization. I mean, that, that is the highest standard, and that's the kind of people that I've always, I've always admired my teachers, my professors, wow, when they actualize, that's, that's what they're doing. They use Maslow's kind of thought process. They're achieving, the superintendent calls it polish, and I like that term, because it's, it's professional polish. You, you get there. You read, you're well-read, you're, you know, and you don't have to go and be compensated. You can, if it's a work-related thing, and there's some criteria to it. But I would like the community to know that our teachers, at least as far as I know, are always enhancing their professional ability. That's what you got to do, and not have it rely on being paid to enhance your understanding. Wow, I, I, I think that's probably huge compared to the little bit they might get paid for. I, I just think it is, I hope it is, because knowing the quality. knowing the quality of teachers like yourself, you might be out there learning all kinds of things. I would think that that was, that was the lion's share. And this, this other might be a small part, the compensation part. But we want to make that simple. I get that. But let's not make that the, like, like they're, they're standing in line just to learn how to be a teacher and stay up to date, and they got to get paid or they're not going to do it. Now, I, I just can't go there. And it's a twist. And it's, it's not a kind of a thing. Discussion in the community is a wonderful thing. It's called free speech. It's your bosses. It's my bosses. It's the people that are the bosses out there. It isn't rumors. It isn't goofiness that has to be set straight. It is the community. It is our boss. It is the whole, the whole package. So in pushing this forward, I love the idea that teachers can actualize. And if they go down a certain path, they can get paid. And I'm happy with that. And we make it efficient, you know.
Not, not to get too into the weeds, but to just share with you that when we do our state reporting, we do look at compensated, non-compensated, things like that. And we had over 5,000 courses or sections last year alone that were not compensated.
Yes.
That were out there for our employees. So there is a significant amount out there. And people are partaking in those courses. So we're excited to share that. And we've got a lot of amazing, amazing employees in Marion County. And sometimes they are doing it because they're required, and sometimes they're doing it because they desire that. They desire to continue their own growth.
And hip, hip, hooray for those teachers. And that's the kind of quality that we want to portray. That's, that's what we want.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Browning and Board. Just a couple of thoughts from me, Ms. Biddick. So I know we've talked about course content a bit and where you just noted that there were all of these courses that employees were partaking in that. I, I do just want to ensure, because I want to make sure that this was clarified, that this cost is going to be inclusive of some coursework within Canvas. Like there, there will, we will have the regular courses that we are Title IX Ethics, Alice, all of that will be a part of Canvas, either whether we import something we've already done, or it's not that we will have to do these add-ons to ensure that Canvas does have what we already know are established courses. Is that correct?
Yes. The current courses in Canvas, the Alice courses, we created. We took something from what was handed to us and we put it into the platform of Canvas to then present it as a professional learning, an online learning.
Okay.
So all of those are already there that we've created on Canvas. And we purposely did that on Canvas because our hope was at some point to move towards something new. So we have already done that. That all stays where it is. And we will continue to create course content. But we are not, this purchase does not go and get a whole library of additional content. Could we at some point purchase that from Canvas or another company that then feeds into Canvas? We could. But that's not what this purchase is looking at at this time.
Okay, okay. That helps clarify. Just while we're making this purchase, we just want to ensure that what our employees need will actually be a part of the platform once we do have it in place. And that, that was, that was where my question was going. I want to tell you how thankful I am that you took the time, not only, and granted, I honestly don't know that you needed quite that length of time, but took the time, basically 11 months, to ensure that you weren't just presenting us with ideas, but you were actually coming to us with the best, what you believe to be the best solution. When we have subject matter experts like yourself in professional leadership and learning, you're bringing to us your best recommendation. And I'm grateful that you spent the time to, to do that for us, regardless of the cost factor. So I want to stress to that. I also want to say that this reminds me of the tech services paperwork order that we just went to a purchase of a new electronic system for work order processing because our tech services department had been using paperwork orders in 2022. And for you to tell me that we had someone doing compensation by hand gives me heart palpitations, frankly. I understand the exorbitant cost of $800,000 to $900,000, whatever that might appear to look like on the surface. However, I recommend that this board, should this, should additional employees come forth with recommendations that will clean up our processes, that will clean up our systems, that we not balk at a high price tag. Because frankly, what I think would be helpful for us, just for further transparency for the community, is to track the, the cost savings from employee time and even just a whole employee even, salary and benefits on a whole employee, that that was their entire job, what the cost savings will then be from the lack of inefficiency. There's kind of a double negative on that. But I, and the reason that I say that, I have another question. Let me ask that question really quick because it kind of is in the same vein. And then I want to make a suggestion perhaps, district-wide. A part of your slide four is talking about the integration with Skyward Business. And I asked the superintendent of this directly when we talked about this presentation earlier this week. My question is, and maybe this is Mr. Carrillo, maybe it's Ms. Boston Ellis, whomever, is Skyward Business the system that we need to continue? Is it the most efficient for us? Maybe it is. Maybe there are add-ons we need. Maybe there's revamping of that system. But I just want to ensure, and I think Canvas will be able to talk to whatever we choose for financial. But as we continue to discuss school-based budgeting and financial systems that we need to elaborate on, that this district may also, I'm not going to say dark ages, but may also be 10, 15, 20 years behind in some other systems. I want to ensure that we're prepared as a board to take other big steps that are going to help move us in the right direction. So I'm just making that statement because you've brought it up, the integration with Skyward Business. While that will help us today, we want to ensure that Canvas, and Mr. Carrillo's shaking his head, that Canvas, as we purchase this for professional leadership and learning and all that we're going to have there, that it will then be able to talk to whatever we choose from a financial management system, if that is a direction that we may take in the future to change that.
I can share that other districts use a different management system for their business side, and it does work with them.
Okay.
So that was one of the things that we were trying to find districts that do use Skyward, to ensure that those districts were happy with how Canvas does integrate with Skyward. And, you know, it depends on how you built Skyward for your district.
Sure.
So, you know, which pieces did we build Skyward with? So we can't exactly match ourselves to other districts, but we can ask them just in generality, how happy they are. And so that's where Mr. Carrillo and his team have come in, helping us to make sure that it, it all integrates and works together. And if it doesn't, then looking at what pieces of Canvas might need to be built to ensure that that little piece does bridge between the two.
Or what pieces of Skyward need to be built or added on. And that, that's where I'm going with this. There may be additional things. And that's where my recommendation is going to go. And this isn't necessarily for you, Ms. Biddick. This is kind of just a general, I was thinking about putting it in board comments, but because we're talking about systems efficiencies, in a, in a previous job where I worked, obviously, this would have been many years ago, and there actually was a paper suggestion box. I'm not recommending a paper suggestion box. But perhaps if we were to create a proverbial electronic suggestion box, where an employee can either make suggestions anonymously, or even with their name attached, and here's where I'm going with this thought process. I've had employees reach out to me recently about additional inefficiencies in other departments. How they get that information to someone who actually can make a change for them, I think we need to get there, that we need to start figuring out, and potentially even, if the employee is willing to share their name, that we actually add a stipend or something to that. And so in a previous job that I've, I've held, if there was a significant cost savings, once the efficiency, inefficiency was identified and rectified, if there was a significant cost savings, then the employee was then somehow $25 gift card, or you know, or employee of the month, or whatever that looks like. I think it would significantly benefit this district. We have lots, to Mr. Browning's point, we have lots of very smart people in this district, lots of people in all sorts of positions, from the, you know, CEO level to the, you know, lowest on the totem pole, whatever that might be, who can identify inefficiencies and how we can get better as a district. And if there's anything that I want to stress, and I think Mr. Browning would agree with this, he's not going to be on the board much longer, the operational inefficiencies within this district have been eye-opening to me as a board member. And again, using tech services as an example, these just happen to be two things that have come before this board in the last three or four months, that we can say, yes, there are price tags associated, but holy cow, how much better are we going to be? And some of that is putting the right people in the right positions so that you can identify what needs to be done, regardless of the price tag. And yes, we have to be fiscally responsible. I get that. But again, the cost savings on the back end will be so significant if we can get the right systems in place. So I, I don't know what that looks like, what this proverbial electronic suggestion box looks like. I think it would only benefit us as a district. I think if we figured out what the cost savings benefit analysis would be, once we identify the inefficiency and rectify it, if there's a way that we could somehow give a benefit to an employee because of that, I think that would be terrific. That would again, only be if the employee was willing to, to give us their name. But I do want to have the ability to have an anonymous electronic suggestion box, that an employee can just say, I just got to said department, whatever that might be. I've worked in the district for 30 years and I'm now in a new department. And oh my goodness, you know, or I've been in this department for 20 years. And if we could just get this, this would change everything, whatever that might be. And I think that we're heading in that direction. I think that we've had employees that may have felt as if their voices have been silenced, and that they haven't been able to be as forthcoming with those kinds of recommendations. So anything, Superintendent, that we can do to try to help in that vein, Mr. Carrillo, anything we can do to try to help in that vein, to give employees the voice. Because Ms. Biddick, if you hadn't have identified this and the role that you're in now, and you hadn't been the one that was chosen for this particular purpose, I don't know that we would be having this conversation today, frankly. I don't know if we would have been having the conversation about the tech services work orders if some things hadn't have happened in, in that area. And so there probably are other departments that need to have that same keen eye put on them. And anything we can do to improve operational effectiveness and efficiency, this board member is all in favor 100%. Those are my comments on this. Any other comments?
Yes. I'd like to, I'd like to say that Tesla Motor Company, I was referring to Ford earlier, Tesla Motor Company daily makes changes, daily. And the routine, you might want to take a look at it. The routine goes from an employee that has a suggestion, goes to the immediate management level, which is on the same floor, close by. Then if it has merit, they huddle and boom, it's implemented. And it just happens that quick. And it's because the 100% of their job is what they do for a living. They don't need anything extra. They just nail it. And they nail it on a regular basis. And it's absolutely an incredible management system. And while I'm very happy with this, and I want to give a, use that consent word, I do not want this to go into a consent agenda. While I'm on the board, if this comes up for a vote, I want it, Superintendent, I'm just telling you right now, just pull it right out, put it on the docket. I want the community to know about this. And we'll have more questions, of course, when this comes. So for my part, it's pulled right now. Okay? Okay, thank you.
Ms. Thor?
Thank you. I feel like what I'm, what it all really comes down to in the end is, is trust. You know, if we want to unleash the power of our employees, that, where they can be able to say directly, hey, I have an idea. Hey, I've noticed something. Hey, I think we could probably do it better if we did it this way, then we're going to accelerate in all of the areas of the strategic plan that we've been discussing today. And, you know, doing what you say and saying what you do are really important. You know, if, if we're going to tell employees that they're going to get paid for something, then they need to be paid on time. I mean, any of us that's in business doesn't want to be paid three, six months later. And I believe that what you're talking about here is going to go a very long way towards fixing that, building trust, elevating our systems and our processes, which have become so antiquated. And it's not because no one wanted to fix them previously. You know, money was being directed towards the kids. And, and that's, needs to continue to be our focus. But, but we have a funding source here to finally be able to do this. And with that concurrent unleashing of this culture, this, this culture of innovation and noticing things and feeling empowered to make suggestions with, with no fear of retaliation, I have no doubts that that's going to continue to help our bottom line. It's, it's going to free up money that we probably never even knew existed. Because that's what empowering people does. And so conversations like this, we're at this point, and, and it couldn't be more exciting. This is when the work becomes really joyful. Because it's like, okay, you know, this is going to make a big difference in our organization. And, and people are going to notice that. And the community is going to notice that. The employees are going to notice that. And, and hopefully, it's going to make them feel very empowered, whether it's an electronic suggestion box, or just, you know, having the trust and faith to be able to say, hey, I'm Bonnie and I have an idea. That'll be really, really good for our district. So yeah, you brought some great stuff to us today.
Thank you.
I think that's all from us. Ms. Biddick, thank you so much. We'll be looking forward to this item being in the discussion in a future board meeting.
Great. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you. So I believe that wraps up the agenda items. We are at comments and concerns, starting with Ms. Martinez-Lopez. I'll go to Mr. Powers.
Nothing additional from Legal. Thank you.
Dr. Goett.
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. Members of the board, I'll, I'll start with what we, what we just discussed. There, there was a lot of great feedback and discussion today. Thank you. But I want to start with, yes, systems and processes that benefit our employees and our students. And so with that said, for example, I just started jotting down a little list, budgeting, human resources, student reports. As you all know, I'm very data-driven and very outcome-focused. And so even when I, in my role, ask for reports, people aren't able to provide them. And I usually get, well, it'll take us a while to pull this. And I said, okay, hold on. No, all I'm looking for is for you to pull this, this budgetary report or this human resource report so we could start to do some analysis. We are, we are far from there. So I appreciate the board's discussion today in support of us moving in that direction. Is there a financial aspect to this? Absolutely. But I think the return on that investment far outweighs that investment, as you discussed today, with impact to our employees who aren't getting paid for the work that they're doing. So I just wanted to, to share that and appreciate your recognition of the efficiencies and how important it is for us as a district to operate that way. It also helps us publicly for people to recognize what we're doing and how we are providing a deep analysis and looking at those numbers and looking at how we can get better. We can't lead by wondering and by assumptions. And I think that's very dangerous. So appreciate, again, the depth with which this board is, is with us on this journey to get to, to the facts and the figures. And we don't sugarcoat it. We don't gloss over it. And, and the numbers are what they are. And to Ms. King's point earlier, they are what they are. And sometimes we're going to meet those measures and sometimes we're not. And I've said from the very beginning, when I first arrived in Marion County, that's okay. Because if we don't meet them, we don't meet them. But, but there's nothing to hide. So, thank you.
Thank you. And before we get into actual board comments, is there any public comment on this item? And we say that jokingly because I failed to ask for public comment, but there's not a single person in the auditorium right now. So there is no one from the public here. But for anyone watching, is there any public comment? Seeing none. Ms. King, do you have anything for us?
I do. I'm glad we had great discussion today, talking about data, you know, and not ever sugarcoating or glossing and always being upfront and honest. Because again, the numbers don't lie. Sometimes the manipulators do. So I reiterate that. Sometimes the manipulators do, so I reiterate that. Also tomorrow, East Marion, they're turning, they're going to have their celebration for 100 years. And that's quite an accomplishment, a 100-year-old school. The celebration was supposed to be last week. It has been moved to tomorrow night because of the hurricane. I am extending my regrets that I will not be able to attend as I have another commitment. So I don't know if anybody else could attend, but maybe appreciated by them. Also during our last break, I had the opportunity to go visit the cafeteria at MTI here and wonderful assistant, Lisandra, she gave me great customer service and I just want to say the lemon genoua was wonderful. And I will close with that, thank you.
I'm going to see if Reverend Cummings is on the phone. I'm not, it looks like he is, but he may be in the middle of something. Reverend Cummings, can you hear us? He may not be able to. I do want to give him the opportunity to have comment. Reverend Cummings, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, would you like to share some comments with us?
No, listen, I've, I've been listening in and out all day. I heard some things in Mr. Whitehouse's presentation that, and that was, I know there's a very long discussion in that. I just want to reiterate one of the things the superintendent said, that we're about every child succeeding, every being proficient, it's not a percentage, we're looking for 100%. And, and the numbers are what they are and we have to acknowledge that the numbers are what they are. But I believe that as we push forward, we have to push forward with the goal of us having a goal of 100%. We know that's not going to happen in one day, but that has to be the ultimate goal. So I thank Mr. Whitehouse for that presentation. And I thank you guys for the spirited discussion that you guys had on it, the lengthy spirited discussion that you had on it as well, and then as well as Ms. Bidik's presentation as well. So I thank you guys. And just also want to commend everyone that came out last week to the, to the ribbon cutting for the Florida Early Learning Academy. It was truly a great morning, that morning, and looking forward to some great things coming that way. Shout out to East Marion on their 100th year celebration that's going to happen. Won't be there tomorrow, but definitely there in spirits. So thank you guys. Also to, a shout out to our, to our district team. Last week, we dealt with Hurricane Ian and there was a concerted effort from our district. We always do a great job. I want to thank, thank the team that was there, the ELC, all our board members that showed up and to Ms. Dobbins and Mr. McFadden and Ms. Rohr and that, that group of people that were, that core group of people that was there, making sure that we had what we need to do. We did what we needed to do. And to all those that worked the shelters throughout the storm and were just so professional in all that they did. So again, thank you. We are a great district, we have great people and we do great work. We just got to keep putting it out there and doing the right thing. So again, thank you. I'm in, I'm in a conference right now, but I've been paying attention, so thank you.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. Mr. Browning.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. This is looking forward to the future. I think under the superintendent, we are making giant strides forward. And today's workshop really, really fit into that truancy, this other professional development especially. All these things really matter in, in the beauty of, of not, the individuals who are embedded in dysfunctional systems never, ever have to take the hit for the dysfunction. These are systemic problems and it's incumbent on us as board members and the superintendent and her top staff to handle them. Bring them out, know they're not great, know they're not efficient, know, you know, and nobody likes to criticize. I went to the University of Central Missouri, Dale Carnegie was one of our alumni. I actually sat in Dale's desk, it had a DC on it carved into the, it used to be kids had pocket knives and I put a DB right beside his DC. But it's, it's, they'll probably send me the bill for refinishing that desk.
Vandalism, you just promoted vandalism.
And that's okay. We didn't call it vandalism at the time, it used to be.
I'll advise you, the statute of limitations is passed.
Yeah, it likely did. We used to put like DC loves MB or something like that. And it's just used to be the way, the way it was. So I digress a little bit. But what I want to do is I want to address a couple of things that I've seen, I've brought them up along the way, but I'd like to see them addressed, this business of how we start the meeting. This instruction, I don't know where in the world it came from, but I'm going to, for the sake of, of making the point, I'm going to pretend for a moment, the superintendent was about to speak. And, and so we start the meeting and I say, Superintendent, would you, this is only because of the sunshine law, mind you, but I would want you to maintain orderly conduct. I want you to display proper decorum. I want you to, you may criticize some things, but I, I want to, I want you to be respectful. In other words, there's this implication, like, like the person who is speaking to us is, is a disaster. It's like, wow. And what is the upside of that? There is no upside, especially for example, remove your hat. Wait a minute, there's nobody here. Number two, there's nobody with a hat, you typically don't see it. Where did these things come from? What in the world is going on? If it's a Muslim lady, get rid of that babushka or whatever it is that they're called. You know, come on. I'm sorry, that's just a silly way to operate unless there's something to it that I don't see. So.
Setting the tone for conduct like that, it does happen in courts throughout, it's typically because of attendance at a public meeting. And it's, it's a, it's a general initial statement that provides a context specifically, since you asked where it came from. There are also Florida statutes on point, including some of the statutes that reference disruption, things like that, that indicate that the public shall be periodically reminded in open meetings about those factors. So that's, that's where the derivation was.
It, okay, so that is so vague and there's such an implication, and I believe from a marketing point of view, and we do try to brand, we do try to say we're great, we do try to say that we're, we get the job done and that our outcomes and our intentions are proper. But often we make what I consider to be a public relations blunder, when someone takes the time and they come down to, to, to this board, to address the board, to make the assumption that they're likely to be out of line, disrespectful, you know, that type, they need that lecture. I just think from a marketing point of view, and I'm making this comment, that from a marketing point of view, that is no way to run a railroad. It just isn't. And what we're trying to do is build credibility, these are our bosses, these are wonderful people. And you notice that there's nobody here. And I think that might be part of the issue. Like they're not received well. I think if they're received in a more generous fashion, a more congenial fashion, and we tell them, we, we won't talk with them, we've got all these rules. But yet some people we do talk with if they're friendly or if we like them or whatever, we've got all these subjective rules. So I'm just saying, as we go forward and we try to run a better railroad, if you will, let's just think about that a minute. I don't think you need to chastise an empty room to take off their hats and be more respectful when in fact, nobody showed up. And that might be the reason, they've been insulted. Let's just, I'm just saying. Okay, next item, this venue. Since there's nobody here, and often that's the case, except for our hired help, often that's the case, nobody here. And we're treating this today, and I'll just say, we've moved this thing down from about 60 feet to maybe it's at 45 feet now. I don't know, we've moved this forward, so we're closer. But there's absolutely no dollar benefit, like we, we've, we've got this auditorium, but this is not an auditorium function. This is a, this is an empty room all the time. I've never been where we started filling it up. So if we could think more in terms of what we're actually trying to do here and communicate, these presenters should have been right here. You should have been able to take an image of them without zooming because we don't have binoculars. We don't have the ability to zoom. They're portrayed as filling the frame, but that takes a binocular to do that. That takes a zoom situation. If, if it's done in a way that facilitates a board meeting and helps to communicate and helps to, we did get better speakers, that's a huge advantage. But I'm just saying that this venue would cost us the identical amount if, and it's twice as big, it may be, it may be a little more than that than our old venue. And we could easily set up to have people actually come within our presence. It's not like we're, we're, you know, the king of Siam up here on this big stage utilizing a venue that I think does a disservice to the board. It puts you in an adversarial position with the board, with the, the folks in the audience. And I think they'd be much more willing to come and address us. And I think we should, we should, if it's an appropriate question, I think we should have, you know, light, especially within their timeframe, they should be able to question, they should be able to discuss, they should be able to bring forward a complimentary flavor, if that's what they would like to do. And they should be able to ask a question, just get something cleared up. I think it would help the overall audience. So that's just, that's my opinions. The zoom nature, like for example, if the microphone were here beside me, it would get the, the sound that's coming from over there, that's coming here because nobody can hear that person because they're so far away. And yet that's a direct feed in, so it sounds like the person's being heard, but they're not. They, they need to take that, technology needs to take the feed from this table. And then it would be sort of an indication of just how problematic it is. And we shouldn't use a zoom if we don't have zoom capability and there's no reason for a person to be so far away. Yeah, I'm just saying, for the board going next year and the years after, wow. It just seems to me like we could be so much further ahead. Let's see, the, the other item that I have is, I've asked, I've asked public relations to play the Stanton program we have, it documents many of the issues, safety issues that we have in that area, unitary status issues, which are incredibly important. It doesn't, it doesn't receive anywhere near the, the attention I believe it should, but I've asked them to put that on, on comments and play that next Tuesday. And it will, it will help everybody be on the same page when it comes to our safety people, our safety officers out there interviewing, looking, our, some of the teachers have come down, some very elite folks have come down from Alachua just to help with this particular thing. It will help to get the message across that perhaps before I'm off this board, we have safety ingredients, components at the Stanton School commensurate with any of our other schools. Is it 50 other schools, whatever it is, 50 or 60 schools, that they're identical, that we do actually have unitary status. And I think we'll.
We do.
Pardon me?
We do have unitary status.
But maintain it, that we do maintain in actuality, that we used to have separate but equal, but it wasn't. And the courts looked at that hard.
Oh, right, yeah, it's not a segregated school.
It was.
All schools were.
It was a segregated school. And the, the, the unitary status is a item that must be maintained. It must be maintained in order for everyone that is at that school, if they walk in or they're driven in, that they receive equal treatment. That's just, that's just incumbent in that particular law, civil rights law. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair.
Ms. Thoreau.
Thank you. And I'll just say, I'm so excited at the direction that our district is going. You know, you can't keep moving the chairs around on the Titanic and expecting it not to sink. And today's work session and so many others that we've had through the past few years really, have exemplified to me the dedication and just the willingness to take whatever's happening, when it's great, we celebrate it, when it's not so great, we acknowledge it. And then we roll our sleeves up and we get to work to make it better. So I'm just super grateful that we are turning outrage into action. And with that, our district and our community really stands with the affected school districts and communities across Florida that have been, that have been just devastated by Hurricane Ian. My understanding is we have district staff that is ready whenever they're called to go down and, and assist with students and schools that are just struggling to get back up and running. The school itself may not have even been damaged, but if there are no safe roads to get to it, then it just delays reopening and identifying any community centers or churches or any places that could potentially house the students and teachers down there so that they can get back going as soon as possible. I'm sure they're working hard to identify. I just want to say that this is something I know as a district that, that we'll do whatever we can and help however we can. Because any, any day that the disruption continues, and it's just been such a destructive disruption, makes it that much harder for, for kids to get the education that they need and for their families to be able to, you know, do what they need to do. So I'm just very, very mindful that although we were spared here, in the end, we're still all affected. And so whatever, whatever we can do, Dr. Gullett, I'm sure there's going to be needs and if there's resources that you think that we have, please bring them forward.
Thank you. I'm Board Member Thoreau. And as an update to the board, I did hear back from Superintendent Bernier, we've been talking regularly from Lee County this morning, so we're standing ready to, to go. They've just had a lot to work through with the facilities there, safety, and he knows that our team is ready to go. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Board and Superintendent Attorney Powers and Ms. Martinez-Lopez for the work that we've, we've put in today. This has been a very valuable work session and the topics that we've discussed today would never be discussed in private. Frankly, it's something that we as a board welcome, the transparency and the ability to discuss these topics in the open. Regardless of the number of folks who attend our meetings in person, we know that there are people, as I've received multiple emails throughout this work session, people who are watching live. people who are watching live, online, and then those who will go back and watch after the fact. So we know there is engagement. Oftentimes, people are unable to attend for whatever reason. And if they, we have been present in this room before when a topic is on a work session agenda where more than 100 people showed up because it was something of relevance to them and something that they wanted to potentially weigh in on and wanted to hear this board's comments live. And so we understand that. We also understand that other forums with constitutionally elected officials throughout this county, when they are holding public meetings, often their auditoriums are filled. And then as soon as an item on the agenda is addressed, then the room is dismissed, essentially. And so folks tend to attend meetings, regardless of the time of day, when it directly impacts what they are doing on a daily basis or directly impacts their lives. And so with that being said, I, there are a couple of additional comments I want to make just as we're wrapping up today. Since I've been on this board, I know that we had the ability during our master board training, soon after I became a board member, where we did revisit our, not only our commitment statement that is read at the beginning of our meetings, as Ms. Thoreau did today, but also we have revisited the opening rules of our public meetings. And so perhaps, following our organizational meeting in November, we might want to have that discussion again if there is a need for us to revisit not only our commitment statement, but potentially also our opening rules for public meetings, just so we can have that dialogue and ensure that we're all on the same page with how our meetings begin. Additionally, the irony, I would say, to conversation about this venue being appropriate and/or inappropriate for our meetings is just within the last year to two years, this board has had limited discussion on district offices and what that would look like should this board be interested, and this district be interested, in pursuing something else. And I remember conversation when we considered other venues and potentially even purchasing other venues. And even when I was an audience member in the past, prior to actually sitting on this dais and hearing the conversation and the dialogue and how it would look to purchase a specific property and build an auditorium that would hold X number of people or what have you. Those conversations completely ceased about a year ago. So the irony of the conversation today that potentially has brought up venue as a board conversation again, is that those conversations that we held about a year ago have completely ceased. So I think it might be time as well, after our organizational meeting in November, to start having conversation again about what that might look like. I don't believe this district has another venue that's capable of holding anyone, frankly. Our previous venue and board room, interestingly enough, actually gave the impression on TV that it was much, much larger than it actually was. So the irony to the dialogue that's occurred today is that while we may be zooming in on a speaker now, in the past, where we may not have had to, the old room only held about 30 people. So we have the capability to hold many people from the public now. And we welcome the public to participate in any conversation and public comment that we might have at any time. And we are all available via phone. We are all available via email. And certainly, this public venue is also the opportunity for the public to weigh in. So thank you again, Board and the team here for doing such a fabulous job through the hurricane that we were spared from. Thank you for the readiness of our team. And even our first responders from Marion County that are out serving, serving other communities that need that. It's servant leadership that really will get us through. And I'm grateful for the team and their willingness to do that. Congratulations to East Marion on their 100-year anniversary. My hope is I will be back from Crystal River tomorrow and the meeting I have tomorrow. I'm hoping I will make it back in time, but I don't know how long that meeting will go. I don't know that I'll be in attendance, but I hope that I can be for their celebration tomorrow evening. And again, as the board mentioned, the Fordham Early Learning ribbon cutting was a wonderful highlight to our week last week that ended very uniquely. But it was a wonderful way to start the week. If we could start every day with kids singing to us, it would just bring it all back home for us. And that's really why we do what we do, ensuring that every student succeeds, from our earliest, youngest learner to those who have reached the aging-out capacity at 22 and beyond. We really are here as a district to make sure that we are ensuring every student succeeds. So thank you, Board, for your hard work. And with that, at 1:15, I'm going to say this work session has concluded. Thank you.